Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, June 25th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Colleagues, it is now 10:20 a.m. and we have seven members present, three shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of scheduled presentations and introductions. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember LaBange.
Mr. Cardenas is ready. We'd like to call Eusebio Guadalupe Alonso Romero Terrones to the podium. That's one person. In short, his name is Lupe. Today, we're celebrating the culmination of 37 years of dedicated service, longer than some council members have been alive. Thirty-seven years with the Cultural Affairs Department, which at the time that Lupe started with them was known as the Municipal Arts Department. Although Lupe hasn't changed his name, the department has. But Lupe hasn't changed other than his growing commitment to his constituents, to his colleagues, and the city of Los Angeles. Lupe is going to be sorely missed because Lupe is the kind of person that when he comes to work, he's here to work and he's here to go above and beyond the call of duty. He's a person who's known for giving, 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 over and above the call of duty in so many ways. Like I said, we're going to miss him very much. And with that, I'd like to give my colleague, Mr. Tom LaBange, a couple of minutes to say a few words as well before we give Lupe his plaque and he gives an opportunity to say some parting words.
Thank you, Tony. And what is special about Los Angeles City Service is we do have great employees who work and are the fabric of the community. And you are the fabric of the Cultural Affairs Department. Through all its transformations, you have always been there to help the arts. And you're quite an artistic-looking gentleman. Come closer to me. I want to make sure you get on that camera. And I love his shirt. Turn around, real quick. The great seal of the city of Los Angeles and the great City Hall, which you've served so well because Municipal Arts, Tony, used to be in this building on the 15th floor. And all the, from Mr. Ross to Mr. Croden to Mr. Nodel to now Ms. Reese, you've been there helping all the department. And several of the staff members are here, so I'm just pleased to sit with you, Tony, to salute someone who contributed to our Cultural Affairs Department to help in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to say it's been, it's been interesting. And yes, I've been through a few mayors, a few general managers and everything. And like you said, I'm a, I'm city all the way, all the way through.
L.A. city.
Mr. Thomas is going to say something on behalf of the- Sure. Just very briefly, on behalf of the Cultural Affairs Department, Lupe, as you can probably imagine, is really one of our real staples and we are going to miss him a lot. We can call on him to do many different tasks and he's always willing to assist in any way. So it's going to really be a void at the Cultural Affairs Department, but we wish him well. Thank you.
Eusebio Guadalupe Alonso Romero Terrones Lupe, we congratulate you and thank you so much for your dedicated service. They're going to need that many people, five, six people, to fill his shoes when he leaves. We're going to miss you tremendously and we want to thank you not only for what you've given to the city, but for teaching your colleagues how to be much more like you. So congratulations and your well-deserved retirement.
Thank you very much.
Since we alluded to budgets, this frame is not paid for a taxpayer's expense, so don't-
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for our next presentation. Let me recognize Councilmember LaBange.
Irving Bloomingfeld. Irving Bloomingfeld, the great sound man for this City Council. And he's retiring after almost two decades of service to this city and a great career as an engineer. Tony, I want you to just start off a little because he's your constituent, but I'll, I'll come in right behind you. You okay? Okay. Born and raised in Pittsburgh, he attended Peabody High School in 1954 to 1958. And if he lived in L.A., he would probably have gone to one of the great schools in Los Angeles, but he, he may have gone to Marshall, but he would have gone to the great one to take audiovisual. But he's been happily married to his lovely wife Judy, who's equally retiring from her service with Water &amp; Power since 1965. They're proud parents of David and their daughter-in-law Samantha, who are here with us today. He attended Pierce College, where he received an A.A. in electrical engineering, and he graduated from California State University, Northridge, in 1972 with a bachelor's degree in business administration, operations management, and production control. He's a proud resident of Van Nuys, California, in Mr. Cardenas' district. And prior to working with the city of Los Angeles, he was a great team member for NASA, for Goddard Space Flight Center in Greenbelt, Maryland, where he performed design work for Gemini and Apollo and document and the development on various communication satellite systems. He truly is a special man who has contributed in two great careers, in the field of aeronautics and also in communications. His work, though, with the city of Los Angeles has been able all of our departments to communicate well with citizenry at community events, at meetings, commission meetings, and even our own city council. I just wanted to stand here to salute Big Irv because he was always so nice to me and all of us, truly, in making sure the sound worked so we could get the message out, to be able to communicate as a great sound man is. Because without sound, there's not a lot we could do as politicians, right, guys? Well, come on now, be honest about it now, huh? Anyway, Irv, on behalf of the City Council, I want to salute you and Judy for your years of service and salute you. Let's give him a big hand for two decades of service. Thank you so much.
I just want to add to that, the two engineers on the council, Alex Bidean and myself, we felt really comfortable knowing that we had our engineer literally watching our back here. And I just want to give two comments about how astute Irv is. Irv knew right away when he met Tom LaBange and Tom joined the circle here to just keep Tom's mic on all the time. And then he could spend the rest of the time working with the rest of us. In addition to that, I just want to say that Irv is the kind of person that has shown his dedication. And once again, as we just dedicated another person who's retired from the city of Los Angeles, Irv knows how to help other people learn and grow. And Irv has been a leader within his department, not only because he's an electrical engineer by training, just because he has the heart and soul to know how to be kind and giving and understanding and working with his colleagues. And that's how his colleagues know him. And his colleagues have been commenting to me based on me asking them, "What are you guys going to do without him?" And they're kind of saying, "Well, we don't know." But things are going to be all right because I think Irv is going to be going to the desert so he doesn't miss us very much, at least the rumor I heard. So he can be around a lot of hot air, so he kind of feels at home. I'm just, come on, just a joke, come on, guys. It's a joke, Mr. President, just kidding.
Keep your day job.
He's giving me this serious look.
Because he's an engineer, that's why.
I think we have some other colleagues who'd like to say some words.
Ms. Zakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Irv, you know, I-
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, June 25th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Colleagues, it is now 10:20 a.m. and we have seven members present, three shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we do have a number of scheduled presentations and introductions. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Labange.
We'd like to call Eusebio Guadalupe Alonso Romero Terrones to the podium. That's one person. In short, his name is Lupe. Today, we're celebrating the culmination of 37 years of dedicated service, longer than some council members have been alive. Thirty-seven years with the Cultural Affairs Department, which at the time that Lupe started with them was known as the Municipal Arts Department. Although Lupe hasn't changed his name, the department has. But Lupe hasn't changed other than his growing commitment to his constituents, to his colleagues, and the city of Los Angeles. Lupe is going to be sorely missed because Lupe is the kind of person that when he comes to work, he's here to work and he's here to go above and beyond the call of duty. He's a person who's known for giving, 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 over and above the call of duty in so many ways. Like I said, we're going to miss him very much. And with that, I'd like to give my colleague, Mr. Tom Labange, a couple of minutes to say a few words as well before we give Lupe his plaque and he gives an opportunity to say some parting words.
Thank you, Tony. And what is special about Los Angeles City service is we do have great employees who work and are the fabric of the community. And you are the fabric of the Cultural Affairs Department. Through all its transformations, you have always been there to help the arts. And you're quite an artistic-looking gentleman. Come closer to me. I want to make sure you get on that camera. And I love his shirt. Turn around, real quick. The great seal of the city of Los Angeles and the great City Hall, which you've served so well because Municipal Arts, Tony, used to be in this building on the 15th floor. And all the, from Mr. Ross to Mr. Croden to Mr. Nodel to now Ms. Reese, you've been there helping all the department. And several of the staff members are here, so I'm just pleased to sit with you, Tony, to salute someone who contributed to our Cultural Affairs Department to help in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to say it's been, it's been interesting. And yes, I've been through a few mayors, a few general managers and everything. And like you said, I'm, I'm city all the way, all the way through.
Just very briefly, on behalf of the Cultural Affairs Department, Lupe, as you can probably imagine, is really one of our real staples and we are going to miss him a lot. We can call on him to do many different tasks and he's always willing to assist in any way. So it's going to really be a void at the Cultural Affairs Department, but we wish him well. Thank you.
Eusebio Guadalupe Alonso Romero Terrones Lupe, we congratulate you and thank you so much for your dedicated service. They're going to need that many people, five, six people, to fill his shoes when he leaves. We're going to miss you tremendously and we want to thank you not only for what you've given to the city, but for teaching your colleagues how to be much more like you. So congratulations and your well-deserved retirement. Since we alluded to budgets, this frame is not paid for a taxpayer's expense, so don't...
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. For our next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Labange.
Yes.
Irving Bloomingfeld. Irving Bloomingfeld, the great sound man for this City Council. And he's retiring after almost two decades of service to this city and a great career as an engineer. Tony, I want you to just start off a little because he's your constituent, but I'll, I'll come in right behind you. You okay? Okay. Born and raised at Pittsburgh, he attended Peabody High School in 1954 to 1958. And if he lived in L.A., he would probably have gone to one of the great schools in Los Angeles, but he, he may have gone to Marshall, but he would have gone to the great one to take audiovisual. But he's been happily married to his lovely wife Judy, who's equally retiring from her service with Water and Power since 1965. They're proud parents of David and their daughter-in-law Samantha, who are here with us today. He attended Pierce College, where he received an A.A. in Electrical Engineering, and he graduated from California State University, Northridge, in 1972 with a bachelor's degree in Business Administration, Operations Management, and Product, Production Control. He's a proud resident of Van Nuys, California, in Mr. Cardenas' district. And prior to working with the city of Los Angeles, he was a great team member for NASA, for Goddard Space Flight Center in Greenbelt, Maryland, where he performed design work for Gemini and Apollo and document, and the development on various communication satellite systems. He truly is a special man who has contributed in two great careers, in the field of aeronautics and also in communications. His work, though, with the city of Los Angeles has been able, all of our departments, to communicate well with citizenry at community events, at meetings, commission meetings, and even our own City Council. I just wanted to stand here to salute Big Irv because he was always so nice to me and all of us truly, in making sure the sound worked so we could get the message out, to be able to communicate as a great sound man is. Because without sound, there's not a lot we could do as politicians, right, guys? Well, come on now, be honest about it now, huh? Anyway, Irv, on behalf of the City Council, I want to salute you and Judy for your years of service and salute you. Let's give him a big hand for two decades of service. Thank you so much.
I just want to add to that, the two engineers on the council, Alex Bithia and myself, we felt really comfortable knowing that we had our engineer literally watching our back here. And I just want to give two comments about how astute Irv is. Irv knew right away when he met Tom Labange and Tom joined the circle here to just keep Tom's mic on all the time. And then he could spend the rest of the time working with the rest of us. In addition to that, I just want to say that, that Irv is the kind of person that has shown his dedication. And once again, as we just dedicated another person who's retired from the city of Los Angeles, Irv knows how to help other people learn and grow. And Herb has been a leader within his department, not only because he's an electrical engineer by training, just because he has the heart and soul to know how to be kind and giving and understanding and working with his colleagues. And that's how his colleagues know him. And his colleagues have been commenting to me based on me asking them, "What are you guys going to do without him?" And they're kind of saying, "Well, we don't know." But things are going to be all right because I think Irv is going to be going to the desert so he doesn't miss us very much, at least the rumor I heard, so he can be around a lot of hot air, so he kind of feels at home. I'm just, come on, it's a joke, come on, guys. It's a joke, Mr. President, just kidding.
Keep your day job.
He's giving me this serious look. Okay.
Because he's an engineer, that's why.
I think we have some other colleagues who'd like to say some words.
Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Irv, you know, I was going to compliment you on your incredible skill to always have Tom's mic at the ready. I mean, he keeps you alert, but Tony gave it away. It's just on all the time, so that's, that's the secret. But I want to comment not only about your being here and your being a presence who allow us to be looking rather flawless or smooth anyway, and when we get up to speak, but more than that, I mean, when we really look at what we've done recently and embarked on the meetings outside of here. Here, we've got the control booth, the tower, everything's set up and, and the switches work the way they're supposed to. But to set that up and duplicate that out in the field, at any kind of environment that we throw at you, and again, create that smooth, flawless transition. We've never been at a meeting where the mics don't work. And we've been in many other meetings that you don't control where that does happen, you know, where people are pounding on the mic and it's not working. But never at a meeting that's under your control. So I respect that. I think it's tremendous. And you are going to be missed. And so hopefully, all of those controls and switches and the like, you've left a really, really good manual to let everybody else who's following in your footsteps know where and how they can make it operate as flawlessly as you have. So congratulations on your retirement and thank you.
Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I too want to add my thanks to Irv. And those of you know, he seems like a serious guy, but he's got a great sense of humor. And I don't know if you're going to miss having me, I see you all the time having Carl's Jr. across the street. Hopefully, near your house, you have one. But you really have helped us all and been professional, warm, like I said, a great sense of humor. And as Ms. Sikowski said, we have expanded the responsibilities of our engineers and having to go out to community meetings late in the night, where sometimes you have to cut off the mic for individuals, but, because you never do that with us, right? Never, okay. But I just want to say thank you. I've enjoyed working with you and knowing you for many, many years in my, my previous employment here in the city of Los Angeles. You will be sorely missed here in this, in the city family. Thanks for all your work.
Before we hear from the engineer with a sense of humor, I think somebody from the department wants to say a few words.
Acting General Manager of ITA Thera, Bradshaw.
Thank you. You know, we had the opportunity to celebrate Irv's retirement yesterday in the tower and the sun shone, which means that the sun's going to shine that much brighter as he enters a new chapter in his book. He has been such a dedicated public servant. And I don't know if the council knows, but his wife is also retiring. And so this is really congratulations to both of them as they have served the city so well for so many years and served the council so well, so all of your constituents could learn what, and see government in action. So Irv from the department, it is a big loss and we're going to miss you, but we are so incredibly proud to have had the opportunity to call you a colleague and work with you. And congratulations to both of you.
Thank you, Irv. And also, Mr. President members, we have our Director of Planning, who has an interesting side note about Irv.
You know, Irv has served you all so well, but I want you to know he's also served our eight commissions, the Planning Commission and always two area planning commissions and sometimes in a pinch, others. And first, I want you to know, Irv has probably attended more commission meetings than any staff or commissioner. And he's been terrific. We're already missing him. Yesterday, we had a six-hour Planning Commission meeting. I looked up and there's no Irv. And I always depended on his twinkle in his eye to, to say, "Yes, this person is going on too long." But, so anyway, I wanted, wanted to give him a certificate from all of the people at Planning, including several commission presidents, thanking you for the many hours. And as many of you mentioned, they go into the night and they're off-site and, but he's been, he's been a terrific help to the whole planning field. So this is an honorary planning degree.
It's time for you to sound good, Irv.
Let me make sure ITA gets that microphone ready.
Steve, are you ready? Is this on? Can, can you hear me? Is this on? You know, I've always wanted to do that. It seems like it's very fashionable here to do that. I've had a few careers, but this is the cherry on top of the sundae. But I really like banana splits. I never did get involved in politics, but here I am doing press conferences for the mayor, for the, for 15 council members, the police chief, the fire chief, library commission, planning commission, and committee meetings. My wife used to say I had my fingers on the pulse of the city. I want to thank my supervisor, Russ Bellinut, who sponsored my open house yesterday in the City Hall Tower. It turned out to be a council audio extravaganza and I was overwhelmed. I want to thank Steve Toby and Ken Moody for being not just my coworkers, but my dear friends. I want to thank the three guys behind those cameras. Dave Brown, who's on vacation today, Camilo, and my little buddy, Francisco. I want to especially thank Tom, who not only has been out on almost every press conference in the field with me, but who stood and ran a video of my open house without a tripod for two hours yesterday. Now, that's Channel 35. I want to thank our two sergeant-at-arms. Herman, who was on vacation this week, but sent me a nice letter, and Ron, who keeps those gadflies off my back. I want to thank Ron Butcher for 25 years, wait a minute, let me do that again, Ron. I want to thank Ron Butcher for after 25 years putting film in his camera so I can finally get a picture of myself with a council member. I want to thank my son David and his wife Samantha for being here with me today. And my wife Judy, who went with me on those late, late night meetings and kept me awake, I mean, on the way home. And last, I want to thank the mayor and his staff and the council members and their staff for taking me on a grand tour of our city almost every day. It's been an experience I will never forget. Thank you.
Thank you very much for our next presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, we have three presentations. First of all, I'd like to ask Alex Ford to come up. Alex. And also her family who's here to honor. Alex has been a city employee for 11 years. We have inadvertently not given her, her PIN. And we, basically, Alex was a member of Margaret Lee Thomas's staff since 93. From the last seven years, she has been the office manager for both the downtown and the district office. She's now the executive assistant for the 8th District. She also serves on her usher bore for the Great Ebenezer Baptist Church, Pastor Solomon Drake. And she has a variety of interests and most of them are here. Her three daughters are here, Sandra, Monique, and Renee, and also sister.
I'm a sister and a mother.
Okay. Oh, her mom and her mom and her sisters here. So I'd like to honor Alex Ford and find out after she began to work for me that my son and her daughter went to grade school together, so it's a small world. So Alex, just want to say thank you for 11 years.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Parks and, and my family. This is unexpected.
Thank you very much. The next presentation, we'd like to make...
Hold on, Mr. Parks. Mr. Lutter wanted to add a few words here.
Alex?
Alex? Alex? Alex? Alex? On your way right back to the office, right? Just like that. Alex, I just wanted to say that the first time I ever walked into City Hall, you were the first person to greet me years and years ago. I'll never forget the way you opened your arms and just said, "Welcome to the 8th District Office." And ever since that day, you've never stopped with that smile. You have persevered through some very difficult times, very difficult moments. But one thing you've always done is you have made the 8th District Office always feel like a home to everybody. We love you and good luck with everything you're going to do. We love you. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next presentation, we'd like to ask Mark Whitlock to come up. And we'd like to also ask, Mark has a cadre of people here with him today, Reverend Cecil Chip Murray, the pastor of Fame First AME Church, Reverend Leonard Jackson, Fabian Weston, a variety of people. We asked them all to come up and Mark will do some introductions after we make the presentation. We're honoring Mark for a variety of reasons, primarily for his accomplishments in the community, but also the fact that he is retiring from Fame and he's going to put full-time into the pastoring of his own church. Mark is the former Vice President of Wealth Fargo and Vice President of Commercial Industrial and National, with the National Division of the Chicago Title Insurance Company. He also was the Executive Director of Fame's Assistant Corporation, President of the Fame Forever Incorporated, a venture capitalist and venture capitalist company. But since 1992, and we've seen him in council a number of times, he has served as Executive Vice President of the Fame Assistance Corporation, a 503(c) nonprofit funding vehicle that offers venture capitalists, capital to business loans, technical training, and assistance in the business community. Let me give you some of the things that he's responsible for. Responsible for an economic development package that includes $20 million Venture Capitalist Fund, $6 million Revolving Loan Fund, an entrepreneurial training program, a business assistance center, personnel services for temporary and full-time positions. He also works with the MTA program and also a used oil recycling program. But what he's most proud of is the Business Incubator Program that he started along with Pastor Murray after the riot in 1992, which established an affiliation with First AME Church with the primary purpose of focusing emerging growth multimedia firms and subsidiary businesses that support them in an effort to bring them to South Los Angeles. The Business Incubator Team has created positive environment for entrepreneurs. And I'm going to ask Mark when he comes up to explain some of the things that he's done to enhance this community. Also, he has gone forward on issues of cleaning up the community. I think Fame was the first church that I'm aware of that when they saw a problem in a neighborhood, they just went out and bought that problem and cleaned it up. As part of his ministerial duties, he organized the men of the church to create the Richard Allen Men's Society. This is a social group of over 3,500 church members who mentor and serve as role models to youth in the community. He also, in looking at his career, he has been a mainstay in dealing with some of the most important prevention and intervention programs. And he, along with the church, has successfully closed 13 nuisance properties in the surrounding areas around the church. He's been the recipient of a number of awards, but what he is moving forward on is he is going to, at full-time, pastor the Christ of Redeemer AME Church in Irvine. And he also serves as a chaplain for the University of California at Irvine. But Mark, I have a personal letter from your sister, and you didn't know that she was aware of this. She sends us a letter from San Jose. She says, "Thanks for honoring," and she highlights, "elder brother who has been both a dear brother, friend, and father figure in my life. He's a leader in every aspect. His quest to seek the best is a shining example of the African-American, a man who chooses to rise above and yet inspire others to rise with him. The true man of God has not forgotten his roots nor his divine calling. I am deeply saddened and I am unable to attend the celebration event to honor my brother, but please share my love in words that cannot express my true feeling with Mark on his special day from Reverend Deborah Whitlock." And also, I understand we have a 50th birthday we're celebrating. So he retires on his 50th birthday. Most of us can't do that, Mark. And also, as he goes forward, and really, he's going to what he believes is his first call, and that is to, to moving forward to serve first and be the pastor of his church. I'm going to ask Mark to come up, introduce those that are with him, but I really would want you to explain a little bit about the incubator program because it is so innovative. It is something that has made such an impact at the corner of Western and Adams Boulevard. So let me ask you to come up.
Well, before we hear from him, we do have a couple members who, of course, have to add a few words of praise. Mr. Villarosa.
Tony. Reverend Whitlock, Lord have mercy. There is a refrain we often times here and read in the Bible about God helping those that help themselves. And when you think about this distinguished church, it's more than a church in many ways. It's a pillar of a great community. It starts with leadership and there have been many great leaders at First AME, but I dare say when they write history, first among them will be the Reverend Cecil Murray. Amen. But when I think, when I think about a young leader, a young Reverend Murray, who best epitomizes and personifies the kind of leadership this church and this community have had over many generations now here in the city of Los Angeles, I think about you, Mark. Thank you, sir. Reverend Whitlock is on his way to tender his own flock. And we know that Jesus was a shepherd and the role of the shepherd is to bring in the flock. And you have been doing that at First AME. You've been doing that with your own congregation. And now it's time to do that on your own. Thank you. In a way that excites all of us. But I want to say a little bit about what you have done with the Fame Renaissance Center, with the Development Fund, the Venture Capitalist Fund. Because we know it's not just about feeding the spirit, though that is first and foremost. We know it's also about feeding the body as well. Amen. And we know that after the civil disturbances of 1992, this was ground zero for the recovery. This was ground zero for the spiritual recovery and ground zero for the economic recovery as well. And you've been throughout those years, leading that effort. And I dare say, when we think about examples of where economic development has occurred and great examples of projects that were promised and delivered, we think about you. Thank you. And Fabian's here with us today and her husband likes to say, the former Speaker, Speaker Herb Weston, likes to talk about the mailman. And that's what you've been. You've been the mailman for First AME. Thank you. Because you have delivered on every promise you've made to the state, the city, the federal government. Thank you. With respect to the opportunities that could come if we invest in a community that's been left behind. Thank you. So for me, it's a real honor to say that I'm a friend and that you're my friend. And a real exciting day for me that you're now on your way to tender your own flock. And I know in First AME, as that leadership ladder moves up, you're going to move up in much the same way that, and do to your new congregation what Reverend Murray did to his. Thank you so much for everything you've done for Los Angeles. Thank you so much for everything you've done for Los Angeles.
Give him a hand clap.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you.
Reverend Whitlock, I also wanted to rise to say, I'm not saying goodbye because I know you're really not retiring. You've just be down the way a little bit.
Thank you.
Yes, and you've been, as my president here is agreeing with me. But I also wanna share with you how fortunate and blessed you are and I think you will continue to be because you have such a tremendous teacher
Yes, we do.
standing right behind you.
Lord have mercy.
Even though he's trying to hide.
Yes, he is.
And what a life-transforming experience that has been, not only to see you evolve as a leader, a spiritual leader, and a community leader.
Thank you.
But to see what a tremendous teacher he has been and how much he gives of himself, of his own gifts.
That's right.
And we've all benefited from that. And I just wanna say, I'll be talking to you very soon.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Amen.
Ms. Grul.
Oh, good God.
So you know, Mark, we, I can't believe you're 50 because that means I'm getting closer to 50.
At least 20 more years.
Right. Uh, we have known each other almost 20 years.
Yes, we have.
Um, as the same with Reverend Murray. And, uh, even though we don't look alike, he's my brother.
That's right.
Um, and someone who I have admired.
Thank you.
We've conspired together.
Yes, we have.
Uh, we have, uh, worked, whether it be on, uh, economic development programs when I was with Tom Bradley or housing issues, to when, uh, I went to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And, uh, I thought, when I went to DreamWorks, okay, I'm not gonna be hearing from Mark or the Reverend other than going to church. But, uh, lo and behold,
That's right.
my, I think my second week.
That's right.
We said, uh, Jeffrey Katzenberg said to me, you know, "We need to go down and talk to
That's right.
Reverend Whitlock and Reverend Murray and talk about what we can do as a company to, uh, um, diversify our industry."
You bought the whole company.
And we, we talked a lot about how we can do that in the public and the private sector. And, uh, I think that, as many people have mentioned, uh, when we look at not only the facilities, the, the projects you developed, but the people who have benefited from that. Um, you have paved a way to, to heaven as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
And that, uh, you know, before I got married, I told my husband, he was my fiance then, I said, "You know, we have to go to First AME Church. I've been there often. I wanna make sure you enjoy, like I do, the music, uh, the religious environment, um, and, uh, my friends Reverend Murray and Reverend Whitlock." And so I had told him a lot about Reverend Murray and what we were gonna hear that day. But colleagues, I was surprised that, you know, Reverend, um, Whitlock had been in Irvine and this was his day that he was going to, uh, be preaching.
That's right.
And I had seen you in many different environments, but I don't think I had seen you, uh, uh, preach as well, as inspired, as, as passionate as you were that day.
The Lord was surprised.
And, uh, we were blessed that day to be able to. And, and my husband said, "When do we go back?" And I said, "Okay, fine. We can get married then, um, if you like going to First AME Church." It's, it's my other home. You're my other part of my family.
Thank you.
And, uh, you will be missed. And I know you started this congregation in Irvine with just a few people. And now I heard how it has flourished, um, and that I just, uh, want you to say, uh, we love you. We'll miss you here in Los Angeles, but know that probably the next time I go visit, you might be the, or go to First AME, you might be the visiting preacher that day.
Thank you.
Um, but, uh, all of the people behind you love you, all the people around this horseshoe do. And, uh, I, um, am pleased and honored, uh, to call you a friend and a brother.
Give her a hand clap. Thank you. Amen.
Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was gonna say a few things and then Reverend Villarogosa started preaching about flocks and sheep and... I figured I had to rewrite my sermon.
That's right. Take a collection.
I heard that. See, there you go. That's all I wanted to say. You just said it right there. Mark, the, uh, funny thing about you is that, uh, every one of us down here knows nobody has been better than you at making things happen.
Thank you.
Uh, for so many years, you've been right-hand to pastor.
That's right.
You have built such an amazing institution as a team.
We have.
I remember living at the corner of 23rd and Congress.
That's right.
And thought I was sleeping in, and all of a sudden I hear, "Down with dope, up with hope, down with dope, up with hope." I look out my window, there's 100 brothers
That's right.
with shirts saying, "Men of Fame."
That's right.
And you guys were taking back a community that had been just devastated by that crack house. And in the end, you got Arsenio Hall. You got a lot of players involved. You turned a crack house into a computer house for kids.
That's right.
And I'll never forget that and I'll never, ever, uh, be able to see anything in that community that can't be done now, knowing that what you did was done.
Thank you.
And so you've been an inspiration. You're gonna be an inspiration in Irvine.
Thank you.
We all trying to figure out what's in Irvine, but that's another thing. That's another thing. We love you and we're gonna see how long we can keep you down here 'cause I know everybody else wants to keep talking. So we love you. Congratulations. Thank you, Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Mark, thank you. Turn around and look at those beautiful people behind you, all that support that you got.
Amen.
And, uh, the beautiful thing I like about people, I'm looking at Reverend Cecil Murray right now, is when one passes a baton to someone else to go run out and do something for others. So it's wonderful. It's our great loss in Los Angeles, but it's the great help of Orange County and Irvine. I have a brother who lives there and I always tease him 'cause everything's planned out there. It's not as like we are, so, but it's coming, you know, it's coming 'cause all of Los Angeles is becoming all of Southern California. So I think that's the beautiful challenge and I think it's great that you're stepping up on, on your own and doing what you're doing. But I remember the great work that we worked a little together on when I was up at Water and Power, when you're helping the community do the right thing. Congratulations and thank you, Councilmember Parks, for bringing this great 50-year-old man in and sent him on his way.
Ooh.
I'm 52. I can say it 'cause I'm 52.
Thanks, Tom.
No, 50 T-O-O. Excuse me. Okay.
Mr. Garcetti.
I have to the 10th power.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Congratulations, Mr. Whitlock. It is a wonderful thing
Thank you.
that you will be spreading not only the goodness that you have spread and shared here with us
Thank you.
uh, here in Los Angeles, but that you'll be, uh, spreading that with new folks and that you'll be able to take the blessings that you have received.
Thank you.
Um, obviously, you've always been looking to get more and to go to the seminary and to be able to spread what you have done on the ground in economic development. And it's been a privilege of mine to be able to work with you, uh, last few years. And, and I know from my father and my family before that as well.
Thank you.
Um, but when I was a child growing up here too, First AME was the, the first church that I went, attended in South Los Angeles. And, uh, there is always a special chill that you get when you come in there. You can feel it in your bones. You can feel it in your body. And you have been a part of that family that has been an inspiration to the city. In the tough times, not just in the good times when it's easy to go to church, but the tough times too
Thank you.
uh, when you have been a part of that. And I just wanna congratulate you, give you all of my hope and inspiration. I look forward to you staying a friend to all of us around this horseshoe because we will need to continue to draw on your expertise and more than that, on your spirit. So congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
I'm do- gonna do the one thing you don't wanna do with a preacher in front of a mic. I'm gonna ask you a quick question. Is God work, is God's work ever done?
No.
No. I just wanna say praise God for giving you those gifts that you give to the community and also thank you for dedicating your life to God's work. God bless you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And I think that's almost everybody.
It is.
That's more votes than, uh, most things that come through here get.
Thank you.
Uh, and all I can say, 'cause there are some mixed emotions around the horseshoe, we thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
And for those who are feeling just a little bit of sadness, just a little bit of sadness, uh, I think Reverend Murray will agree that we can't keep all the angels in the city of Los Angeles. That's right. We need some of these angels to go out and spread out and share that spirit because they'll come back. They'll come back. They'll come back. Reverend Whitlock.
Thank you and please, if you would, we thank Councilman Bernard Parks that stands before us all, representing each and every member of this wonderful body of leaders. Each of you has meant so much to First AME Church and Fame Renaissance. Over the last 10, 11 years, we've been able to push $120 million into a community that's certainly thirst and has a strong desire to help level the economic playing field here in the city. We wanna thank you for allowing us to benefit by way of CDD some five years ago to help buy the property on the corner of Adam and Western, now known as the Fame Renaissance Incubator. That grant for $480,000 coupled with money from the federal government, state government, and private industry, uh, helped us raise some $8 million in that building that was a rock house, a place where women would sell their bodies at night, a place where crips and bloods would hang out. That body, that building now has Wells Fargo Bank, State Farm Insurance, and has some 20 other small businesses. And it's because of what you have been able to do, not only with that building, but also approving, uh, Brother Garcia, another $1.3 million through our Councilman Parks. We will turn that corner in our district into a financial hub. And we believe here at Fame that you deserve a hand clap of praise. So let's put our hands together for them. Amen. Amen. Councilman Bernard Parks, thank you for bringing our team here. Thank you for allowing my mother to see that the spankings that she offered me from the age of one through nine, and even now at the age of 50, have paid off. Thank you, Steve Johnson, our President of Fame Assistance Corporation, for making sure that the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. Our Chief Financial Officer, thank you, Norma Cook, for making sure that we have the infrastructure that makes things possible. Reverend Leonard Jackson, who is our go-person within the political halls, certainly in Congress as well as state and local government. But there's one man and also our team at Fame Renaissance. Behind me certainly represents the village that helps raise the children that will certainly be our leaders for tomorrow. Good God almighty, business development, environmental protection, as well as our, uh, transportation, welfare to work, and home loan divisions. They are here with us. But all of that, amen, uh, is because one man had a vision some 20, 27 years ago. One man who met this man who was also a gang member at one time and sold things that you all would've locked me up for. It was one man that had the vision for it and I give him all the credit. I give God the credit for working through him. And his name is Reverend Cecil Murray and without him, we would not be here today. And so I really wanna give him the thanks and thank them. And I'm gonna ask him to say a few words as I make this move to decide through Councilman Parks, if you don't mind. My wife, boy, you'd have put her on the spot. She is in Seattle, Washington, and she apologizes and representing her is Norma Cook. Never would, never would. I thank you. I thank you. Amen. Amen. Pastor Murray.
Thank you all so much. We are happily in your debt. This illustrious soul which stands now before the most prestigious city council in America will stand at the same time tomorrow on the floor as a lecturer at Harvard University. Thank you, Lord.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I just want to express my appreciation to Mark Whitlock in behalf of our Episcopal Supervisor of the 5th District Women's Missionary Society for all you have done, Mark, to help us carry forth the work of mission. God bless you and Mia in the future.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, at this time, colleagues, let me ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villarogosa, White, Sign, Padilla, 13 members present and a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Mr. Parks, did you have another presentation?
I have one more, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask, uh, the final presentation would be to Mr. Ted Alamehu. Come on up, Ted. This is a young man I met just recently and I'm here today to honor him because he has come up with a very unique idea. He realizes that the wealth of medical experience in the medical field in the United States, although it does a wonderful job, also is a group of people that he's enlisted on a very unique task, uh, which he calls U.S. Doctors for Africa. He founded this organization in 2001. He had a dream of giving back to the people of Africa who had become, uh, really, uh, infected with a major disease of AIDS. Uh, he has gone forward and as he likes to say, he invented this organization in his bedroom a few years ago. Now, he is moving out to where it is now beginning to focus on the issues, uh, in both countries. But the core mission of U.S. Doctors for Africa is to promote the flow of volunteer doctors, nurses, and other medical professions to provide desperately needed medical services to populations ravished by disease, malnutrition, inadequate medical care, and especially in the area of HIV and AIDS. U.S. Doctors for Africa actively pursues its mission by encouraging medical professionals to volunteer their time and expertise to this critical humanitarian effort. Uh, their partners, uh, are carefully screened. The medical facilities in Africa are mats they, with those needs of available volunteers. Their goal is volunteer mission is a valuable, safe, and gratifying one. They strive to ensure that the expertise gathered in the United States is certainly drawn on for a much larger cause in Africa. So we're here today to thank Ted and I'm gonna have him give an overview of what their program is and also introduce those that are here. But I just wanna say, Ted, thank you for what you're doing. You have an impressive program and we just wanted to honor you and give you an opportunity to highlight that program.
Thank you very much. Um, first of all, I would like to thank Council, Councilmember Parks for, uh, acknowledging your work, inviting us to the city council, and to share our vision of this organization. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, to be formal, uh, on behalf of the Board of Directors of U.S. Doctors for Africa, uh, those who have registered and continue to register as medical professionals to volunteer in Africa, I do like to express my deepest gratitude for giving us this incredible recognition, uh, and award. The, uh, accepting this award is, uh, personally means a lot, but I don't believe that we have done enough to deserve it. What it means though is, is a motivational tool for our continued work commitment to continue mobilizing the American, American professionals to pay extra attention to the crisis in Africa that's taking millions of lives. To give you a perfect picture, what it means to be in Africa and being affected by this disease, think of the population of the greater Los Angeles area, which I would think will be four or five million of people. Think of that number seven, eight times they're affected. We have no hope, no help, and looking for desperately the medical professionals, equipment, supplies, anything that would help them fight and win this war. And I also like to, uh, share what it means to have the greatest city of the world, city of Los Angeles, recognizing us. We deeply appreciate this, but I think in the long run, we ask you to support us, be our guardian angels. We keep you posted on our progress, challenges, in the years to come. If anything that this council can do to help spread the word to the greater Los Angeles community, to help us with this, uh, mission and vision, whether it's the medical manpower, whether it's equipment, additional publicity, or funding, it would be greatly appreciated. On that note, I thank you so very much, Councilmember. And with me, you have, uh, the staff members and volunteers and experts, uh, who are literally volunteering their time and, uh, been with us for the past, uh, four or five years. There's Aaron Allen. And I have, uh, Mo and his wife. And I have Sid, Kevin Walsh, and Keith Palmer, including Pedro Salamayo. And if you guys like to say a word, that's fine. Thank you so very much.
Thank you for your generosity.
Thank you for your generosity, and thank you, Councilmember Parks. We're very excited to be here, and we're very excited about the things to come. We are a rather new organization, and we know about the pandemic happening to our global community. And we ask people to come together to support our world, because we know in Los Angeles we have a lot of things that we're trying to overcome, but our global community needs a lot of help as well, and we appreciate the recognition. So thank you very much.
Let me ask Steve to come up, our City Age Coordinator, to make a comment on that issue.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Just a few brief words. When we're confronted with the HIV and AIDS epidemic in Los Angeles, we do often forget how much devastation the epidemic has caused internationally, particularly in Africa. We also often fail to recognize the incredible work that Los Angeles residents do to fight the epidemic overseas. And more often, we also forget that sometimes the HIV and AIDS infection rate in some of our most impacted communities, particularly African-American and Latino communities in Los Angeles, sometimes rivals that of Sub-Saharan Africa and the Caribbean. So the AIDS epidemic comes full circle. With that in mind, the AIDS Coordinator's Office looks forward to working with U.S. Doctors for Africa on policy issues, both local and federal, both here and abroad, because we all have something to learn from each other in finding the best tools to combat this epidemic. So it's my pleasure to join with the council this morning in recognizing Mr. Alamehu and the work of the U.S. Doctors for Africa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Colleagues, before calling on the next presentation, let's go through the agenda and dispense with consent items. Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Miskowski moves. Mr. Parks seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Garcetti seconds.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 7 are street lighting district items. Notice for public hearing.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on items 1 through 7. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Members wishing to call any specials, 1 through 7 of the regular agenda. If there are no requests for specials, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item 8 is a commission appointment. Do you wish to consider it this time?
Let's hold item 8 temporarily on the desk. We'll take this item up after calling specials and before returning to presentations. Next item.
Items 9 through 21 are items for which public hearings have been held. On items 15 and 17, public hearings were held in committee, and those reports haven't distributed to all members. On item 20, there are two reports on file, and motion is required. The recommendations differ.
Okay. Members, items 9 through 21 now before us, public hearings have been held in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. If there's any such motion, now's the time. If not, specials. Ms. Han.
I need to reconsider item 2.
Okay, we'll do that in just a second. 9 through 21, any specials? Mr. Garcetti?
Yes, Mr. President, if we can, number 19, if we can just send one part of that back to committee, the part about the waivers for committee chairs and the council president, that section, and the rest of it is good?
Okay. There's no other requests on that item. That shall be the order. Item 19 to be approved, with the exception of one section being sent back to committee. Any specials, 9 through 21? Do need a motion, item 20. Ms. Han?
Let's call 15 special.
Okay, 15, call special by Ms. Han. Mr. Garcetti?
Next, next round.
Okay. Well, let's hold 20 on the desk until we get a motion from the floor on the balance of the items. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those items are approved, including item 19 as amended. Next items, please.
Items 22 through 38 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, items 22 through 38 are before the city council today, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Items 22 through 38, any specials? Any specials, 22 through 38? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved, and I believe item 33 is received and filed per the recommendation. Next item, please.
On the continuation agenda, item 39 is an item for which public hearing has been held. There is an urgency clause, 12 votes are required.
Item 39 now before us. And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Any requests for special? If not, let's open the roll, item 39, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved.
Item 20?
Item 20, Mr. Garcetti.
Yeah, I'd make the motion to move the Budget and Finance Committee report.
Okay. Any further discussion, item 20? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. And at this time, let's temporarily recess the regular meeting agenda. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll on the special meeting.
Cardinals Garcetti, Grill, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vidagosa, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, 13 members present, and a quorum.
Okay, colleagues, we have a two-item special agenda. We do have cards in item number one of the special agenda. We'll call that special. On item number two, I do not have cards from members of the public. Public hearing is open, public hearing is closed. Members wishing to call item two of the special agenda special? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. And without objection, let's continue item one of the special agenda to the regular meeting. We can now adjourn the special meeting, return to the regular meeting, returning to item number eight. Mr. Clerk.
Item 8 is the appointment of Mr. Sean Tralilla to the Ethics Commission.
And if he'll come forward at this time, let me recognize Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, although I'm not a member of the Rules and Election Committee report, which did recommend this, this is actually one of those rare commissions where in our charter, the appointing authority is split among a number of different people. So this particular position and the term that is due fell to the President Pro Tem to make a nomination for this commission, a five-year term that will stay in place beyond the Pro Tem's position. But in doing this, as many of you may be aware, I sent out not only a press release but a letter asking for people to respond. I had a very, very interesting group of people who talked about wanting the importance of our Ethics Commission and its value and what it should be doing. And I know this council has looked at it, as well as the commission, in terms of a number of different areas that it deals with, whether it's enforcement of our existing laws, whether it's looking at changing in some of the laws, whether it's reacting to the perception and perceived issues that are out there on the pay-to-play and commissioners' involvement. And this commission has been at the forefront in trying to reconcile those and bring new recommendations to this council that fall within a range of hopefully reasonableness. Mr. Tralilla, who I did meet with and was recommended by others in the realm, has a unique experience and a unique group of experiences that I think will serve us well and serve the commission well. I will let him speak for himself, but most recently, he has been, before coming to Los Angeles and the USC School of Annenberg Communications, dealing with television and communications in our media today. There, he was previously with something called the Pew Foundation, which is a nonprofit charitable trust, which was really looking at the issues nationwide of politics, campaigning, and issues of that nature. And prior to that, some, I think, 10 years ago or earlier, he was in Washington, dealing with issues of managing and being involved in campaigns as well. So he has some unique experience of knowing it is, knowing what it is that we as elected officials try to do, how we try to do it within the rules, and then afterwards, how it affects others. I would like to ask Mr. Tralilla to perhaps address us a little bit at this time, but it was with a very good feeling that I made this nomination and I'm recommending his appointment to the full council. Mr. Tralilla?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Miskowski. First of all, I want to thank you for nominating me to this post.
Pull the microphone a little bit closer.
First of all, I want to thank you for nominating me to this post. I'm honored and extremely excited. But also, as a citizen of the city of Los Angeles, I want to take a moment and thank you for all the great things that you've done to improve our life here in this city. And you've done a lot of them, but in my humble opinion, and I know this is somewhat biased, I think some of the more important things that you've done and your true legacy is the work that you've done to improve the quality of democracy here in Los Angeles to make elections and government more open, more fair, and accountable. To the Rules and Elections Committee, to the members that I met with, I thank you very much for your time and for sharing your insights with me and your wisdom and your concerns and what inspires you. I enjoyed those meetings, and I hope that they mark the beginning of a truly fruitful And to city council, to members of council, I'm here today to present my credentials and to field your questions and hear your insights about what you think the role of a commissioner ought to be on the Ethics Commission. And I want to tell you, I've been a paid political consultant in my career. I've worked for a member of Congress in a very different type of legislature. And I've studied democracy for many years. And I can tell you that from the beginning of my career and through all of that, even to today, I've always believed that it's not as important who wins elections as it is how elections are won. It's not as important who runs government as it is how government is run. If elections and government are run in an open, accountable, and fair way, then citizens trust in democracy and truly great things can be accomplished. And I want to report to you, on a national level, for the last 10 decades, the city of Los Angeles has enjoyed an incredible reputation, known as a city where pay-to-play is not the norm. However, and I congratulate you for that. However, I'm also here to report to you today that recently, that reputation has been questioned. And in the next five years, I believe the city of Los Angeles will be experiencing challenging times on this issue. And the question for all of us, including you, the elected officials who make the decisions about the quality of democracy, is whether this city will be a pay-to-play city or whether it will be a city with a government that is fair, open, and accountable. And with that, I think I'll close and open the floor to your questions, and I'm interested and curious to hear your insights.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, Rules and Election Committee met with and heard and asked questions and did recommend this, and I believe that this is a very, very good nominee to the Ethics Commission and ask for your support.
Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. He is indeed a very good nominee, but Ms. Miskowski, it takes a very good nomination to make a very good nominee. You had the whole city as your oyster, and you found a real pearl. And you did what you typically do around here. You're going to be gone, he's going to live on for one council term passed, at least passed your time here. So thank you. You talked about her legacy and her legacy being good government, and, you know, that's an awful lot to throw on your shoulders, but you can handle that, because that really is your passion. And I want to just, I want to tell you one brief anecdote and then ask you a question. The anecdote is that I do need to disclose that I have been lobbied with respect to your nomination. And it was an unpaid lobbyist, or, well, apparently unpaid lobbyist, at least he hasn't disclosed any particular sources of income relating to the lobbying. And the person who lobbied me is someone who has had me as a guest speaker in his campaign finance reform and ethics law class. And as hard as the questions are that you're going to be asking over the next couple of years, they weren't half as hard as the questions that those law students ask when they've got a real live one in their grips. And I told that law class, when I had the chance to speak there, they could ask anything they want, and I would give them those brutally candid and honest responses. And I think if you check with your lobbyist, you'll hopefully find out that I did that. And that is what you're going to do for the next five years here. Campaign finance reform has been one of your intellectual passions. If you could please just tell the council in a couple of minutes what particular aspects of campaign finance reform you've been most involved in, and what, not to prejudge any issues, because it is complicated here, but looking to the future, just intellectually, what are you most curious and interested in in L.A.?
Thank you, Councilmember Weiss. And in case you're wondering, the person who called him was not a paid lobbyist on my behalf. He was a former grantee, former. I no longer have any power over him. When I was at the Pew Charitable Trusts, it was my task some eight years ago to draft a strategy and pull together some of the nation's greatest scholars and activists, and try to figure out a way, first, to understand why citizens were withdrawing from the political process in droves, and second, to figure out how to begin to fix it. And so after hiring some of the top pollsters at Harvard and Yale and Princeton, and some West Coast pollsters at USC and at UCLA, what we found is something that I think we all know intuitively, citizens don't trust the system. They don't think it's fair. And so as we explored deeper, we found that there were a lot of reasons for this, but primary and central in their minds was the role of money in politics. There was a sense that money tipped the scales and made the process unfair. And so I set about trying to figure out a way with a group of scholars to make the system more fair. And in the end, we put forward a series of proposals that, in some indirect ways, ultimately became what's commonly referred to as the McCain-Finegold legislation, the Bipartisan Campaign Reform Act of 2002, and ultimately, we laid the groundwork for the successful Supreme Court case, McConnell versus FEC. Now, that case, as you know, was a landmark case in election constitutional law. There were two key elements to that case that I think that fascinated me the most and that I believe have some applicability here in Los Angeles. First, the role of outside money. All of you who have run campaigns, all of you who have been involved in campaigns, know that between 1990 and today, the role of outside money, independent spending, has expanded dramatically. And in fact, many of my old clients and some of my friends who are now serving in elected office believe that outside money disables them from controlling the message and winning campaigns. Is this a good thing for democracy? Is this a bad thing for democracy? I don't know. At the federal level, it was a bad thing, and so we included some provisions in McCain-Finegold that addressed that. The other main portion of McCain-Finegold that I felt, that I feel also has applicability to Los Angeles is the more stringent disclosure provisions. I think one of the key things that citizens have told us in surveys and focus groups over the last 10 years while I was at Pew was that they just want to understand who's giving the money and why. And so disclosure, whether it be campaign finance disclosure or lobbying disclosure, is key. Now, I'll conclude in answering with this statement, Councilmember Weiss. More regulation is not always a good thing. It's not the number of regulations, it's being able to strike the balance so that you have a fair and transparent system that encourages good behavior on behalf of elected officials and government bureaucrats, but also ensures that you have a robust and active democracy that brings people in to participate.
And let me just conclude with the few seconds I have left on my time by saying that I think that's exactly the right, those are the right areas to be looking at. One thing, and I know Ms. Pellon will remember this, when we debated the independent expenditure modest package of restrictions that we did about a year or so ago, we touched upon, and I think I mentioned it at the time, this sort of new way... I think I mentioned it at the time, this sort of new wave of non-express advocacy issue advertising that's coming to the forefront. And you can do what you want with the independent expenditures over here, but there is, there is an end around as long as you don't conduct express advocacy. And this is something that you've dealt with when you've looked at the federal issues. I would just suggest to you that, and you know this better than most, because at McCain-Finegold, you weren't trying to fight the last war. Sometimes in public policy, you're fighting the last battle. Independent expenditures have been a big issue, but I see this non-express advocacy issue ad thing as being something that is going to creep up from behind us in L.A. and in California, and I really look forward to your leadership in trying to find creative and legal ways to get out front on that. And I know that's something that you care deeply about.
That's right.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, and I know we have a lot of other items, and I had the chance not only to meet with Sean personally as well as hear in committee. And I think what you hear colleagues from his presentation is this is something he's thought a lot about, has had experience on both sides. And also, as I mentioned in committee, went to the first commission meeting even prior to being confirmed to make sure he was up to date on what was happening. And that rarely happens. So, I'm just pleased to stand up and support Ms. Misakowski's nomination. Sean's going to be a wonderful addition and someone that is going to bring the experience that I think is really critical to, as you mentioned, bringing transparency to our political and the contributions in campaign finance reform that is such, I think, been one of the most important issues that we have in the city of Los Angeles to restore public confidence in what we do. So, look forward to working with you, and I don't think you'll have too much trouble today, so congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you.
Mr. Carreras.
It's obvious by reading your resume, which I've read, that you certainly are very astute on these issues, and actually, you make it part of your life to know exactly what you're getting into when it comes to getting on this very important commission. But I want to ask you a more personal question, and that is, could you share with us what you're, how you feel about the distinction, or is there any distinction between the penalty and difference between something that goes on in someone's campaign that is, say, an accounting error or a mistake versus a willful violation? Because currently, whether it's a willful violation or not, the person could be penalized, for example, up to $5,000 per occurrence.
Yeah. That's a, I think, timely question, Councilmember Carreras. Look, I've said this in the, my personal meetings with the council members I've had the opportunity to meet with, you know, I believe that you've got to look, you've got to make sure the little things are fixed. You know, I'm a broken windows and graffiti type of guy. Clean that stuff up and the big things won't happen. Having said that, there's a difference in kind between an intentional violation and an unintentional violation, and I think my quick read is, we need to examine that and strike a better balance than I think we have right now.
You said a better balance than we have right now? So, you basically feel that, or can you clarify, that there is a distinction between those kinds of violations?
There's a, in my opinion, it's a distinction of kind. There's no comparison. And I think that we need to pay attention to the small things and there needs to be recognition when small things don't get done. We need to point that out. However, I do think it's dangerous when all we focus on is the small things. So, I think that we could perhaps examine it, perhaps do a better job of focusing on the bigger things while not letting go of the small things.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, but you're going to be a Commissioner. This is the part where I say, correct me if I'm wrong. As a Commissioner, you're going to be a policymaker, correct?
Correct. That's my hope.
As a Commissioner, and I hope so too, as a Commissioner in this very important commission, do you see your role as a policymaker, or wait a minute, or do you see it as it's staff's role to make policy?
Well, another great question, and that's front and center with what the commission is trying to work out at this point. But let me tell you what I think. I think that a Commissioner's front and foremost need to help set the tone in the city. And as a Commissioner, I hope to be out front, doing writing, speaking, helping set a tone for what's in bounds and what's out of bounds. I also hope to play a role in the formation of policy. I mean, why be a Commissioner if you're not going to be helping set policy? Now, where does policy setting begin and end? That's what we need to figure out. But to answer your question in the most direct way that I can now, Commissioners, in my opinion, really ought to play a proactive role in setting the tone and establishing policy.
Okay. Well, I'll end with just thanking you for your willingness to dedicate your free time to this very important commission and bringing your expertise and your knowledge to this very important commission that is actually working on policy and creating policy that needs to be created, but it needs to be done as much that you described, very thoughtful and very balanced and very careful, and with the goal in mind of making sure that everything is, that light is shed on everything, but appropriately set on everything and priorities need to be set as well. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carreras. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service to the city. Forthwith, please, on item eight. And let me recognize Mr. Garcetti at this time. There he is.
Like to come up here, members of family would like to join us, you'd be more than welcome. Before I speak, colleagues, we have a very special goodbye today to a very special person who has been a critical part of this city, of what we have done together on housing policy, and is literally the institutional memory of housing here in Los Angeles. But I want to give our general manager of the Housing Department, Mercedes Marquez, the microphone. She is very patiently and I know very excitedly waited. I know she has to go to an appointment, so I'm going to ask her to speak first about Mr. Ralph Esparza. Mercedes?
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning, everyone. We're here today to celebrate Ralph Esparza's career with the city of Los Angeles. Many of us can't remember a time when Ralph Esparza actually didn't exemplify the Housing Department. So, all of us are a little bit amazed that his last email yesterday was, Ralph has left the building. Today, we're here with his nuclear family, but as you can see behind me, many of his LEHD family came today to pay tribute to all of the work that he has done. I would say that throughout his career, there is no part of the Housing Department that Ralph did not work on and make better. I think the highlight of his career actually has to be the establishment and making sure that the Housing Trust Fund flourished. Under his leadership, his patience, and his true love and commitment for the city of Los Angeles, he has ensured that thousands of families are now housed in safe, decent, and I have to also say, beautiful housing here in the city of L.A. Ralph, we cherish you, we congratulate you, and we can hardly wait to have your home phone number to call you back to help us out as we work through the thorny issues. In the six months that I have been here, Ralph has given sound counsel, great advice, creative opportunities for us to move forward. For that, I am eternally grateful. Thank you, and on behalf of the Housing Department, we love you and will miss you.
Thank you, Mrs. Esparza. Thank you very much, Mercedes. And I've asked Councilmember Gruel to join us as well, as somebody who has a very distinguished housing record herself and as our former chair of our Housing and Community Development Committee, so we'll be hearing from her in a second. It has been one of the great joys of the last few years for me, when in committee on housing issues, to have folks who come to the table before us who not only give us the details of what we're voting on, but also give us the insights about what the changes and the projects that we are trying to get out and to roll out into the streets of Los Angeles mean. And Ralph Esparza is somebody who, if you talk to anybody about him, whether it's from the development community, whether it's in the Housing Department, whether it's the nonprofit building community, that's the person that you go to when you can't figure things out. We all have to admit that we are part of a bureaucracy here. Sometimes that bureaucracy can work very efficiently, and other times, because we've piled rules on over years and made things kind of Byzantine in its twists and turns, it is not very easy to navigate. And that's when we rely on the human element. And Ralph Esparza is that, somebody who has come up through the ranks, who has worked tirelessly, not only to navigate the bureaucracy, but to create real change in the community despite all the rules and the regulations. And in housing, let me tell you, I probably have more rules and regulations in housing than any other issue, the issue area that we deal with. We have deals that sometimes have six and seven funding sources, each with their own regulations, and to put something together and actually finally get bricks and mortar out there is something phenomenal, and Ralph has been at the epicenter of that. Let me just read a few things, highlights from his career. He's committed 30 years of his life to government service and 25 years here to the city of Los Angeles in the fields of housing community development. He began his illustrious career with the city on May 1979, just after my eighth birthday, as a rehabilitation project coordinator in the Community Development Department, and he was responsible for the U.S. Department of Housing's award the city of Los Angeles called the Neighborhood Strategy Area Program in the Hollywood community. He also managed three field offices in implementing the CDD's multifamily rehabilitation programs. He was promoted to Community Housing Program Manager in 1983, responsible for the planning, the operation, management of multifamily rehabilitation programs, which remains one of the most important things that we are doing here in Los Angeles. There was a wide range of responsibilities he had, but he began to experience the different funding sources like our block grant, our rental rehabilitation, Section 8 construction, moderate rehabilitation, and on and on and on. In 1987, he was appointed Assistant Chief Grants Administrator, serving as Assistant Housing Director in CDD. And then in 1990, upon the creation of the Housing Preservation and Production Department, in which was then now the Housing Department, Ralph, in his capacity as Assistant Chief Grants Administrator, became the Housing Director, responsible for the planning, operation, and management of the city's housing programs. From 1991 to 95, he planned, directed, and managed the Rent Stabilization Program, and he literally has touched every section of the Housing Department, which is the administration and enforcement of our rent stabilization ordinance. He served as Director of the Program Support Division from 95 to 96 and again from 97 to 2000. He administered, among other programs, our bacon compliance monitoring, housing opportunities for people with AIDS, Grants Management Program, and the Handy Worker Program this year, which we were able to continue. And in September of 2000, Ralph was made, very fittingly, he was appointed Assistant General Manager of the Housing Department, and he was tasked with the operation, the planning, the management of the housing, of housing development, of homeownership, and of neighborhood revitalization programs, essentially all of our housing construction projects. And it has been a historic time that he has been Assistant General Manager, to see what he has done with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Once those funds are in place, it's somewhat easier for us to actually vote on it than it is to implement it. But we would not all be successful with a city if we had only put the money out there and we had fallen on our faces. People would have said, see? People like, you know, our CAO or CLA might have said, see? We knew we couldn't have trusted you with that money, but you have shown this city that it can be trusted with that money. So, I want to just personally congratulate Ralph and his entire family because you have so much knowledge up here. I hope that you will take it upon yourself to mentor folks as a Latino as well, to have an Assistant General Manager within the Housing Department, I know has meant a lot to folks out there in a city that has the population that it does. And I hope that you will be able to mentor a new generation too of housing administrators and leaders, and we thank you very much. And I want to hand over the microphone to Councilmember Wendy Gruel.
Thank you, Eric, and thank you for letting me join today in honoring Ralph Esparza. Ralph, we've known each other 20 years. I've been telling everyone today that I've known them, you know, I'm showing my age. I was a young, yes, I was a young girl then. But when I came to the city of Los Angeles, I worked for the mayor and I worked with Grace Montanez Davis.
Wendy, let me interrupt for just a second. Folks, it's getting loud back here. If we can keep the volume down a little bit. Thank you.
And one of her responsibilities, which ultimately became mine, was liaison to CDD. And we had some fun in those days, didn't we? Parker and Sue and Gloria, and I'm trying to remember the first General Manager's name. Doug Ford. And so, I got my stripes. I learned about economic development, community development, and housing from people like Ralph Esparza. And it wasn't just the nine-to-five job, and I want to thank your family for sharing him with all of us. It was on weekends, it was on nights. During the time I was at HUD, we worked on earthquake recovery, and we were there in those disaster assistance centers, morning, noon, and night, thanks to Henry Cisneros, who was an activist secretary. But Ralph had a wonderful skill of, one, telling it like it is. Ralph didn't hold any punches. He told you what he thought, which was great, because all too often, people just tell you what you want to hear. He didn't roll his eyes when we had some crazy ideas come out of the mayor's office when I was there. He just said, you know what, if it's going to help us build housing, we'll look and see what we can do. And I always appreciated that and looked forward, when I became a city council member, to work closely with Ralph and have had that opportunity to continue that relationship and continue, as Mr. Garcetti has said, with so many important initiatives that have occurred in the last couple of years. And you can leave the employment of City Hall knowing that you made a difference, that you touched numerous, I mean, hundreds of thousands of lives by the housing that you created, by the programs you established. And you did it in a way that was passionate, that was organized, and that we can all be proud of. And so, I'm going to miss you too, Ralph, because I had your home number and cell number and all of that when I, particularly when I was at HUD. We called it all times of the evening. Same number, okay. Did you hear that? Same number. But I just want to say thank you, Ralph, because you did it from your heart, and all of your staff here and the many others that have probably gone before you, I know, appreciated your commitment. And I'm proud to say that I was able to work with you over these last 20 years. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Gruel. Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I just wanted to rise and also say, we're going to miss you, Ralph. And I think Eric said it well when he said it was your really commitment and your love and your compassion, really, not only for just the city of Los Angeles, but for individual people. And that came to light for me when you were with the rest of us thrown into a situation which we did not know what we were into with the Franklin Square Project in Watts. And you can, besides the thousands of people that you've been able to put in houses, you know for a fact that there are 39, 39 people in Watts who were made a promise some 25 years ago that had been...
I didn't make it.
Not, I know, none of us made it. Someone else made the promise, but we were able to make it come true for them. And we have 39 people in Watts who have dream homes because of your patience and your commitment and your, really, there was never for you a question of whether or not we were going to back away from it or whether we were going to hope it was going to go away. You and I were both committed to seeing that through to the end, and I will never be able to thank you enough for what you did for those families in Watts. And I really, we're going to miss you, but this is a well-deserved retirement.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Well, thank you. As a staff member, I had the pleasure of working with Ralph for many years, but I think more importantly, I'm probably speaking today for Hal Berntson, who's not here. Many years ago, we had a problem in the 12th District in an area called Park Parthenia, then at the time, Parthenia Project area, in which there were 45 different apartment buildings, the crime rate, the highest concentration of crime in the San Fernando Valley, other than in Pacoima. 3,000 people living in housing that was really designed for about 1,500 people. Tremendous problem. Ralph came into that project and put together a unique public-private partnership that's still unique in the city of L.A. today, I think, but really thought outside the box in how we could create good quality housing for the people that live there and not the tremendous conditions that were there, and lower the crime rate and do all of this in one project with, I think, out of 45 different properties, there was about 35 owners. It was a phenomenally complicated project, and Ralph worked through this totally outside of, I mean, this was totally outside of anything L.A. or any city really had ever done. And now, it's one of the safer areas where you have concentrated population like that. It's clean, the people are living in dignity there, and it's just a unique project. So, I know I'm speaking for Hal Berntson to say, thank you for what you did. Took us years to put that together, but it was a tremendous, tremendous value to the people of the 12th District, the people that were living there, and just a very unique process. And for me personally, it's just been a... And for me personally, it's just been a pleasure working you as a staff member. This is one of those truly big losses to the city, so God bless you in your retirement and good luck. Thank you.
Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to stand and congratulate you, salute you, for all the battle scars that you must have acquired over the years. And you're still standing, you're still smiling. I know as a staff person as well, we get to share some of these experiences. And as the unsung heroes that you are, and many of the staff members behind you, only you know what you've been through. And when you're catering to, and I say this respectfully, colleagues, 15 kings and queens, along with the mayor, that there's a lot of pressures being pulled upon you. And quite frankly, I'm always amazed. But the fact that you stuck it out, you're now at this threshold, you truly deserve a congratulations. And for all the staff that has worked with you, behind you, by your side, of course, your family, who has been able to endure this kind of pressure, I want to thank them. Because I know what pressures this creates for the family themselves, for themselves. And thank you for being here with him.
Like your councilman.
The exciting part is that there's a wealth of knowledge. And so when I start seeing Esparza and Associates a year from now, we're going to understand how much we can work with you and hopefully really bring in that smart growth, really talk about housing around rail stations, and all the creative ways we can put together this financing, we're going to need that. Because we are truly behind, as hard as you've worked, as hard as the Housing Department, the trust fund, and all the tools are laid in place, we're going to need more. So thank you for being there, and hopefully you don't become a stranger.
Thanks a lot, councilman.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zine.
I think I'm the last one to speak. That's appropriate, the last one there, Ralph. As the sun sets and as the horse rides out of town into retirement, I know what it's like, because your professionalism has really impacted this council and the city, and you are to be commended. People around you obviously know what you have done. A lot of the viewers don't know what you've done to help the people of the city of Los Angeles. So you've had a wonderful career with the city. I know you've been to some of my committee meetings at Personnel when you're coming in there asking for bodies for the department. And you've always been very professional, very cordial, and done it with real good style. So congratulations. Enjoy those checks that come in once a month for the wonderful service you've done to the people of Los Angeles. Well-deserved retirement, so congratulations to you and bless you and your family.
Thank you, councilman.
Ralph, now it's your turn.
Oh, okay. I had the temptation to have, to request that this item go forth with. I just, I don't know. Not today, huh? Madam President, Councilman Garcetti, it's with great pleasure that I be here the last time here rather than in the pit. I spent many times in the pit over the years. But I've always felt that it was a privilege to serve the city council. I really enjoy working with the city council, the committees of the council, especially in the last three years, when between Councilmember Gruel and Garcetti, as chairs of the Housing Committee, being entrusted on me and the department to implement the Housing Trust Fund. And I took that challenge, and I gave a report to the committee two weeks ago, and I think we established a foundation. Last week, we got five more projects approved for tax credits from the trust fund, two more two days ago from MHP. So I think we're on the right track. And it couldn't be done without the leadership and support by Councilman Garcetti. He drives you to perfection, and I appreciate that because he shares the same mission that I have, and that's to produce housing. And that mission will never stop. We have to keep going forward. Councilmember Gruel, this is the last time probably somebody will remember and say it in public, but without Councilmember Gruel, when she was at HUD in 1994, the response to the devastation of the earthquake, we would not have had the resources provided to us, over $300 million and probably 20,000 units. I can never really count them. But it was Councilmember Gruel who was there and was instrumental, working Henry Cisneros. We took the money, we created the programs, we tried to recover as best possible in the fastest time possible. So, but once I leave, no one's going to remember what you did, Wendy. So I hope the city clerk will embed that for the record. But again, thank you, Councilman Reyes, Councilman Smith. It's been a pleasure to work in your districts. I try not to just work for the committee or for the council, but I take great pleasure in working individually with the council members and working out problems that we encounter in each of your districts. So that's been part of the fun as well. So I just want to thank my wife and my family for being behind me all these years. As you said, I was going to the DAX 9 o'clock at night. I'll tell you one more thing that people won't remember either. Wendy was in the forefront when she was in the mayor's office when homelessness became high-profile in 1986. And I remember Wendy working in the old LA print shop that was converted to a temporary shelter. And I remember Wendy, with a broom and a mop, was helping a few people have a shelter that night. And those things stay with me, Wendy. Those are the kind of things I'll remember. So again, thank you, Madam President, for this recognition, and I will now leave the city. Thank you.
Before you do, please, yeah, give him a round of applause. This entire horseshoe and our city attorney and our city controller and our mayor, Jim Hahn, want to present this. It's a small token, and it lists only a few of the things I was going to ask you about the last five projects, so you could detail them for everybody. It's one last staff report, but I won't do that today. We'll have Sergio do it. But on behalf of all of us, we want to present this to you and your family to thank you. It barely begins to say what we all want to, but I hope that is a reminder of the amazing times that you've had here and all that you've done for the citizens of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Clerk, I believe we're going to take special...
We have two other presentations, real quick. Next, I'd like to invite, I know we had the African Methodist Episcopal Church up here before, but I'd like to ask some guests from the Episcopal Community Federal Credit Union to join me as well. And then last but not least, as we broadcast live on Channel 35, we've got a special presentation for Channel 35 as well.
Mr. Garcetti, if I can just interrupt you for one minute. Members, we do have some 12-vote items remaining, so I just want to make sure that we are now down to 13 members with 12-vote items that we have to take up. So please, no one else leave at this point. Mr. Garcetti?
Great, thank you. The Episcopal Community Federal Credit Union is an incredible community treasure that we have here in the city of Los Angeles. Originally founded from a grant for Episcopal Relief and Development in 1992, the credit union provides all sorts of financial services to those most in need here in Los Angeles, low-income families, people who are shut out by the traditional financial institutions, but that we know when they have access to capital, when they have access to opportunity, they too are able to improve their lives just by given that chance. The credit union was established initially to help people whose businesses were destroyed in the civil unrest in 1992. It was a $300,000 grant initially, which financed loans to those business owners who couldn't get any credit otherwise, but who had been able to obviously maintain and sustain businesses and wanted to continue to do that. The services that the credit union provides include financial counseling, savings and checking account, travelers' checks, money orders, all the regular institutions and services of a bank and a financial institution. Low-interest and unsecured loans in particular are available to people who have no credit. That's something really extraordinary in this city, where so many people just need that basic yeast to be able to grow something incredible, but that so many financial institutions often overlook. It's designated low income by the National Credit Union Administration. Credit unions are sometimes a labor of love and a difficult thing to do. When it's done with target audience of low-income clients, it's an even more difficult thing to do. But this designation signifies that over 50% of the members either make less than 50, sorry, make less than 80% average for all wage earners established by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, or have an annual household income at or below 80% of the median household income. The work that the credit union has done throughout Los Angeles is something that I think all of us have been able to celebrate and share in. We've each been able to, throughout the folks that we represent, who have access to the union, be able to see businesses, to see individuals, to see ideas grow into something incredible, and to form a backbone of a city where we still have this gap between haves and have-nots, where the 200 wealthiest individuals have the same wealth as the 2 million poorest in this city. And so on behalf of the city council, I wanted today to present this resolution to the credit union on behalf of myself and the president, Ed Reyes, as well. Congratulations for all you do. Thank you for being such an amazing presence in our community, and we'd love to hear a few words as well from you.
On behalf of the credit union members and the board of directors, I'd like to thank the city for honoring us in this way on our 10th anniversary. Before I was ordained, I spent nearly 20 years in commercial banking, and it has been really a life-giving experience for me to serve a credit union that serves the underserved in our communities. And I've enjoyed that opportunity immensely. I appreciate this honor. And if I may, I would just like to ask all of your help in this ministry, in being aware of and being educated to the financial institutions in our city that prey on the low income, and help us in our ministry as we reach out with services that these people normally don't have access to. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. We certainly appreciate it, because our work is certainly a ministry of the Episcopal Church. In any particular day, a poor person walks into our credit union and needs a loan from $200 up to. There are not many places that these individuals can go to to receive that kind of loan, and the credit union is there for them. For those of you that know the MacArthur District, if you go there any Thursday through Sunday and you see the carts that are there, those carts were financed by the credit union. Those individuals were being harassed by the police because they had no license. Now they have a place that they can come to where they can get their license. In addition to that, Mama's Hot Tamales, when they started that program, the credit union was the first place that they came to so that they can get a loan to fund that program. In addition, the credit union has so many small loans on any given day. Last week, a woman came in. She has 10 children. She lived in the park. She finally got government housing. And we were able to give her a loan to help her purchase furniture and a few beds for her children. And it goes on and on every single day. We don't only give out the loans, but we make sure that these individuals are counsel so they will know how to budget, know that there are things that, what their needs are is not necessarily what their wants are. So we are there for them. And we'd like you to recognize that, that there is a place where poor people come to. Our credit union is 60% low income for the 5% Latina, and we are there at all times to help them. We never turn a person away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to stand, I, we're running out of time, but I felt it was important to share that when the city invested in the vendors, we have been able to put over $250,000 a year in the previous administration under the leadership of Mike Hernandez to create this MacArthur Park vendor district. But it was your role, along with Joe Colletti, I U R D, Bishop Bruno, that completed the picture. And this is a true reflection of a partnership. Just the other day, I had two former vendors who started off with very, very little, got a cart, went through the program, now they're chefs. And they are success story of the job-training component that came along with the cart, with the vendors, with the loans, with the block grants, that created this one complete puzzle. And you were a significant piece. To that, I want to thank you. But I just want to share this with my colleagues, because we can get creative, we can leverage, and we can address those populations who do fall under the radar, who don't have a voice, and make them contributing citizens. And now we have, as an example, these two chefs who now have their own businesses, they have their own companies, and they're hiring people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you again. Congratulations, and a special thanks to Lydia Lopez, our great friend, and Bishop Bruno, who I know is with us in spirit as well. Our last presentation for today is for LA City View, which we are right now live broadcasting on. I'd like to ask them to join us today. Thera Bradshaw is with us. I know Tony Ghanik is here with us also in spirit, but couldn't be with us unfortunately today. But we want to honor them again. This is becoming a regular occurrence around here, where we just say, guess what? Channel 35 has won some more awards. And it is wonderful to see the latest honors that they have come, eight different awards. It was May 20th, the Star Awards Ceremony. We all know the mission of Channel 35, which is to serve not the government, but to serve the people of Los Angeles by giving them access to how their government works each and every day. They have direct access via cable to Channel 35, in which not only can people see government literally transparently, like right now, while people are watching how the city council meeting occurs, but they can see communities, they can see neighborhoods, they can even find new restaurants, I hear. But there's amazing honors that have been bestowed on Channel 35, over 150 local, state, and national awards, including the nine Emmys, which have been highlighted here in council. But on May 20th of this year, the Star Awards Ceremony again honored LA City View, Channel 35, with eight state awards from California and the Nevada chapter of the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors. And there are four first-place awards for public and community meetings. These are meetings like this. These meetings are award-winning here, Los Angeles City Council meetings, community events, the lighting of City Hall, which is an incredible logistical production. I think all of us who know Ms. Misakowski being at Venice City Hall, and having our Valley members out, Marvin Browdy and Ms. Hahn down in San Pedro, and a lot of us here, and Mr. Vieragosa and his predecessors over at Eagle Rock, having that all put together is just an incredible production. The new series of LA This Week, and also the Public Service Announcements for Public Safety, those were all the four first-place awards. There's also four second-place awards for our 3-1-1 Public Service Announcement, LA in Focus, City Attorney Rocky Delgado, and for overall excellence for a large governmental channel. So on behalf of this entire city, we want to say thank you, not for putting us up on the screen, but for putting government up on the screen. We want to thank you to all the people who are behind the scenes, who make sure that the cameras work, to make sure that the sound is functioning, to make sure that we actually have a functioning democracy, because in this room, we can fit a few hundred people. But we know every single day, tens of thousands of people are participating in their local government because of you. So on behalf of this entire city council, the mayor, city attorney, and our city control troller, thank you and congratulations.
Mr. Lovell.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Garcetti, I just wanted to, Councilman, I just want to say, you've got some guts. I remember there was a moment when the LA Times had won all these great Pulitzers, and I was actually thinking, let's bring in the LA Times and honor them for all these Pulitzers. And then sort of the craft side said, no, maybe you don't want to honor the media as an elected official. But this is different. This is really about a service, and this is really about city, government being available to the public. And I think it is a very fitting tribute, very fitting opportunity to congratulate some very deserving employees that have been doing a tremendous job. People love the service, they love what they're seeing. You're always getting compared to C-SPAN out there, and you guys are doing a phenomenal job. You stand on your own, and I think you're one of the best broadcasters. Speaker Vieragosa and former Budget Chair Cardenas have always had to deal with the state system, and we were always jealous of how well things function in the city. So you guys have done a real good job. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Lovell. Mr. Garcetti?
I want to thank you, all council members. You've all signed us on behalf of your government employees, taking you into every household that has cable in this city. And Councilmember Garcetti, thank you for your leadership in honoring and paying tribute to the great team at Channel 35. There's only about 18 staff members at Channel 35, and we complement that by utilizing the great talent that we have here in Hollywood, literally, to show government in action in over 645,000 homes in the city of LA. That's a pretty tremendous medium to really show public policy and your leadership and the good things that the city of Los Angeles is doing, that the community gets to participate in, even if they can't be in this legislative chambers or at a special meeting. So congratulations to the team at 35. A lot of them are back... A lot of them are back there working on your behalf to show you today, but there are some here that have come to pay their tribute to your leadership. And thank you for this.
Thank you again. Congratulations. And coming soon, Flavors of L.A., featuring Janice Hahn in our first episode, exploring the restaurants of the 15th Council District and the neighborhoods, coming very soon. And thank you to all the folks over at Channel 35. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Clerk, let's move to the items remaining on the agenda.
I believe there's been a request to take item one from the special meeting.
I believe that is before, so without objection, we will deal with item one on the special meeting. This is a required public hearing. We have some cards that have been submitted. Let me call forward to testify at this time Louise Stone, Jim Alger, Ted Lang. Please begin. Mr. Parks.
Number 20 forthwith.
All right, number 20 will go forthwith. Okay, Ms. Stone.
With all due respect to the attending members of the city council, I am here as an elected member of the Sunland Tahunga Neighborhood Council. It is my hope that each of you will listen to me and hear what I am about to say. Numerous times, DWP customers came before the C E N R and here in council chambers, asking for honesty and transparency from you. What do we get for all of our time and efforts? Special item number one. Not one single council member declined to approve the 2004-2005 budget when it came before you. And that is why we are here today. I am incredibly disappointed at this council to consider this item after all of the debate that we had about the rate increases, only to discover that the DWP received approval for an 11% rate increase, to later disclose that they only needed 4.7%. We had a public display of humiliation of the DWP by a council member who is not present here now. And that light now shines on the city council. This is a transfer to the general fund of $60 million. We need to call it what it is. It's an abdication of DWP funds collected for the purpose of maintenance, services, and department function. A council member called it borrowing, like the feds do with social security. Well, borrowing is more like freeloaded. He also called it a loan. That implies repayment. I don't see any repayment schedule. This is a take from the DWP. This is a take from city members who pay their DWP bills. We have a 10% city tax that is put on all of our DWP bills. We also have the regular transfers. A take is a grab or a demand. It's a cheat. You have to call this what it really is. It's a tax. It's a burden. It's a drain. It's an exhaustion for funds that were supposed to be put aside for infrastructure and for maintenance of services. Thank you.
Mr. Alger, who will be followed by Mr. Lang, and then Candido Morris.
I was told today that if neighborhood councils came before the city council, it would be grandstanding. The idea is being that this vote was already predetermined, which means this entire exercise today is grandstanding, which means that the arguments that we had a few months ago over the DWP rate hike, when the DWP personnel were brought to that table right in front of me and berated for not being transparent, was grandstanding. It means the neighborhood councils were pandered to. I attended a DWP MOU negotiation that is an outstem from the rate hike. About 26 neighborhood councils were present this past weekend for that. And when this transfer came up, you couldn't get them off the ceiling. Nobody wants this. Not a single council wants this. It's time to call this what it is. It is a tax. When you take money from the Department of Water and Power and then raise our rates to cover the transfer, and you take that money to pay for services, that's a tax, one that would never get past a 2/3 majority required. And that's why you do it. It needs to stop. With me today, I brought my father and mother, 72 years old, on an income of just under $2,000 a month, makes less than $24,000 a year. These are the people you're affecting now. I also brought with me today my son. He's the person you're affecting tomorrow. When we start raising rates to cover things, instead of just reeling in spending, we are affecting real, live people. And it's time this council realizes that. You know, there's a song back from the '60s that says, "It starts off, there's something happening here. What it is ain't exactly clear." Well, what it is is neighborhood councils. And one way or the other, we're going to get transparency in this city. And if that means changing people that are in this horseshoe, then so be it. Thank you.
Mr. Lang.
I submitted a speaker card. I want to go before Ted, if I may.
All right.
My name is David Schneider. I live in Latuna Canyon, a community well represented by Ms. Gruel. Today's transfer is the third one-time-only transfer in three years. Is this actually money borrowed long-term to be spent in one year at City Hall? The annual transfer from DWP used to be 5%. In recent years, it was increased to 7%. This is a 40% increase. And there is already a 10% city tax on power bills. How much tax revenue is enough? How much and when will water and power rates go up again? What about other money and unreimbursed services DWP has called upon to provide to City Hall and city departments, directly and indirectly? How about property taxes for streetlights? Money paid by property owners apparently goes to City Hall, not to DWP. What about free power for traffic signals? An installation of lights, and apparently more free power for city parks? Is it time for City Hall to pay their DWP bill? What are unfunded mandates to promote political, social, and environmental agendas? And perhaps millions and higher contracting costs due to bureaucracy, delays, set-asides, and other agendas? The $60 million transfer today may further compromise reliable water and power services, including disaster response. Yes, the money today may be used for other critical city services such as police and fire. But a final question. How many police officers and firefighters will you need when the lights go out in Los Angeles? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lang, and then the final speaker will be Candido Morris.
Excuse me. My name is Ted Lang. I live in Latuna Canyon as well. And I think Mr. Snyder has brought forth what he wanted to say in a very elegant manner. I'd like to say that it's an honor to speak in front of people like Bernard Parks, who performed a tremendous job for the city during a time of great trial, and I don't think has been duly accorded proper response for that. Wendy Gruel came to our canyon, took over for Joel Wax, and has done a fantastic job. So you will know a little bit about me. I'm from the private sector. I run a manufacturing business, or I don't anymore. I retired. And I had a slew of apartment houses in West Los Angeles, almost 100 of them. I'm very familiar with how you run a business, and you transfer money back and forth in order to ensure that you have a bottom line. I just would ask that the council please, for the people who believe in the way the city is run, and who are attacked with these articles from the Daily News, saying that you guys are not doing your job, and you're squandering the money, if people would come forth and explain to people what you have to do to keep the coffers in the city going. $210 million is quite a bit of money. There are certain things the city has promised. And for one second, as the president and founder of the Latuna Canyon Community Association, and also the founder of the Latuna Oak Canyon Association, I would like to say that 33 years ago, that's a fair amount of time, the city council took 14 feet from every home in Latuna Canyon on both sides of the road to put in another lane. For that huge amount of property, the people were promised a horse trail on the north side of the road. They were promised two equestrian overpasses, because now Latuna Canyon was going to be a very difficult street to traverse with your horse, where before it had been a cul-de-sac, as opposed to an on-ramp to the 210. They were also promised a bore through the mountain to go to Shadow Hills. So the horse rights of these people that they took this property from, this four and a half miles by 14 feet on each side, would be compensated for. In those 33 years, the horse trail has never been put in. The equestrian overpasses have never been placed down, although foundations were threw in. They have never bothered to complete the bore, which they started to go to Shadow Hills. So basically, under the terms of quantum root, you've taken property from 467 homeowners, and you are supposed to compensate them with this simple horse trail. It's never happened. Every time I ask, not Wendy, because I usually don't talk to her, but Dale Thrush, can we please have some start on this? I am told the city's out of funds. And now I see that we have $210 million being transferred here. I believe in the council. I came in here in 1956 with my uncle Henry Feinberg, who was one of the backers of the L.A. Rams. And I was a little kid, and I was just blown away by this place. I'm glad to see it's restored. My daughter is a city employee. I love this city. It's the greatest place, literally, I think, in the United States. And I live in San Francisco, and I live part-time here. This is the place. It's a cultural diversity. It's a melting pot. It's what New York was in the 1890s. You've got a tremendous responsibility here, and one of those responsibilities is to properly use the money and to give back to people like those of us in Latuna Canyon that 33 years ago were promised something that we have never received. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Final speaker is Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Madam President. Because of time restraint, I'm going to hold my comments and my file till after, because I do have a card under public comment.
All right. Then that closes the public hearing on this matter. Special agenda item one is now before us. Any council members wishing to speak? Seeing none, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That matter is approved, and we will send that forthwith. Thank you. I believe that now brings us back to the regular agenda.
Yes, Madam President. Do you wish to take public comment at this time?
Yes, let's go ahead and take public comments at this time. Mr. Morris, you deferred, so we'll call you first. And then the final two speakers in public comment are Dan Sanchez and Sinling Shi.
Thank you, Madam President. Two weeks, roughly around three weeks ago, I did a bus tour with Citizens Unit for Participation and Housing and Urban Development. One of the locations we went to was the Homeboy Industries. That's Mr. Verigosa's district. And we met this young man that was killed just the other day, Mr. Gomez. He was doing graffiti removal, and he had changed his life. Homeboy Industries had changed his life. It was amazing to see that a young man who had given up on life had been given a chance because of Homeboy Industries. But not only because of that, but because of Councilman Antonio Verigosa. He was amazed that someone would take the time just to talk to him and to make sure that the kids and the individuals that were working there and trying to change their lives were worth having a moment of his time. So we thank you for that. But we have programs throughout the city. On June 10th, we attended a summit at Shepherd of the Hill, and Councilwoman Gruel was there, Greg Smith was there, Councilman Zein was there. And we had police officers who are dedicating their lives to work with community groups, with church groups, to turn the lives of these individuals who are having a hard time, gang members, drug people that have issues. We have police officers that are working to try to change the lives of a lot of individuals. So we have to remember the good things. We have a lot of good officers, a lot of good nonprofits. We have a lot of individuals in this city that are trying very, very hard to make it a better life for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Final two speakers, Dan Sanchez and Sinling Shi.
Good afternoon. My name is Dan Sanchez, and I'm a Falun Gong practitioner. Falun Gong is also known as Falun Dafa. Falun Gong is an ancient mind-body practice involving gentle, slow-moving exercises, meditation, and character improvement based on truthfulness, compassion, and tolerance. In a few short years, after it was first introduced in China in 1992 by Master Li Hongzhe, it became the most popular qigong practice in the history of China, with up to 100 million Chinese citizens practicing it by 1999. Today, it is freely practiced in at least 60 countries around the world, but it is no longer allowed to be practiced in China. You see, the former president of China, Jiang Zemin, decided to outlaw it, in part because the numbers practicing it exceeded the number of members in the Communist Party. Since the persecution of Falun Gong in China began in 1999, at least 987 deaths have been verified. In 2001, government officials inside China reported that the actual death toll was well over 1,600. Expert sources now estimate that figure to be in the thousands. Hundreds of thousands have been detained, with hundreds of thousands sentenced to prisons, forced labor camps, brainwashing centers, and mental hospitals, typically without trial. We have information of 10 victims of genocidal murder and over 225 victims of torture in Guangzhou City, the sister city of Los Angeles. But we don't know how high the real numbers are. It was not until the end of World War II that the world came to know the whole truth of the Holocaust. Countless people have wondered if lives could have been saved if actions had been taken earlier. There is still time for concerned people to help stop this genocide. A civil lawsuit in the United States was filed against former Chinese President Jiang Zemin. He is being sued for genocide, torture, and crimes against humanity for his primary role in the persecution of millions of Falun Gong.
Mr. Sanchez, can I ask you to wrap up, please?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of sentences. Thanks. For his role in the persecution. Similar lawsuits have been filed in at least 10 other countries. In addition, other top officials are being sued for their role in the genocide. Tomorrow, June 26th, is United Nations International Day for the Support of Victims of Torture. There will be a press conference and an anti-torture exhibit at the Santa Monica Pier from 12 noon to 1 P.M. We hope many can attend and support this event. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shi.
Good afternoon. My name is Sinling Shi, and I'm the resident of the 11th District. And I'm also a Falun Gong practitioner. If you walk by Mar Vista Recreation Center in early morning, you will see my friends and I practicing this peaceful and relaxing exercise near the tennis court, which gives me good health, stress relief, and a beautiful start of each day. So first of all, I want to thank the mayor, city council, and LAPD, and the residents in Shadow Place community for your support of our Falun Gong events in the city of Los Angeles. We truly appreciate it. And I'm also here to let you know how the Chinese consulate at 443 Shadow Place in Los Angeles has interfered with my right to appeal and the rights to other Falun Gong practitioners. On April 10th, 2004, the Chinese consulate planted bushes on the grass parkway in front of the consulate, thus removing the remaining free area that our Falun Gong practitioners have used for peacefully appealing the escalating persecution and genocide against the Falun Gong in China. So by planting these bushes, the Chinese consulate has interfered with our rights of freedom of expression, freedom of assembly, and our rights to peacefully appeal. The city inspector told us that no permits were obtained for planting these bushes. So we can only conclude that it was therefore done illegally without obtaining the necessary permits. Now, let's think of the following. Suppose it is World War II now. Suppose it is World War II now and there was a consulate of Hitler's Nazi Germany located on Shadow Place in the city of Los Angeles, and that they planted bushes on the parkway to prohibit the local Jewish people from peacefully appealing and protesting in front of their consulate. Wouldn't we do everything to help the Jewish people to protect their rights of appeal, no matter whether that is the property of, the grass area is the property of Los Angeles City or not, particularly when there were victims of a genocide? The fact is that there is also a genocide going on in China today and innocent Falun Gong practitioners, including children, women, men, and senior citizens are being tortured to death simply because they want to become a nice person according to truthfulness, compassion, and tolerance.
Can I ask you to sum up, please? Please conclude.
Sure. So we sincerely hope people can put human rights and conscience as a first priority over trade between the U.S. and China. And we are here to requesting that, to request the removal of the illegally planted bushes and the restoration of the parkway to a flat long area as it was before. Any person acting out of compassion and conscience can really make a great, great difference. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public hearing for today. Mr. Clerk, what remains on the desk?
Madam President, I do believe there was a request by Councilmember Hahn to reconsider item two.
Ms. Hahn, is there any objection? Ms. Hahn moves that we reconsider item two, which was acted on earlier. Without objection, open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That matter is now before us. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, colleagues. I would like to put a verbal amendment into this item instead of receiving and filing it, and that is to instruct the Bureau of Street Lighting to rebalance the 35th and Patton Lighting District and issue the new and improved ballots that we have worked on to make the communication easier. So I appreciate your support on that.
All right. We've heard the request for rebalancing in this particular lighting district. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. We'll send it forthwith.
Item 15 was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, item 15.
You know what? I had all my questions answered by Margie Reece, so I'm okay with this.
All right. Is anyone else wishing to speak on item 15? If not, it's before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. That is approved. And thank you, Ms. Reece, for being with us. Remaining on the desk?
Council has motions for posting or referral.
They are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Zine requests to be excused Tuesday, June 29th for city business. A motion is required. And for Wednesday, October 6th, for city business, that meets council policy.
All right. Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Reyes is second. Mr. Zine is excused on the first date.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused on July 6th, 7th, and 9th for personal business. That also meets council policy.
Councilmember Cardenas is excused on those dates?
That clears the desk, Madam President.
All right. Members, are there any announcements today? Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, I'd like to make two announcements. First of all, the aviation show over at Van Nuys Airport will be going on for two days, starting Saturday at 9:00 a.m. and till 4:00 p.m., and also going on on Sunday as well. And during that time, at about 9:30 in the morning, we'll be dedicating, or shall I say groundbreaking, the new fire facility at the Van Nuys Airport, which is something that is going to help our firefighters do a much better job in the entire region. Those are the kinds of operations that come out of Van Nuys that helped in the recent fires that burned many homes in the surrounding community, but did not burn one home in the city of Los Angeles because our firefighters were there to make sure that didn't happen and they were successful. In addition to that, at Our Lady of Holy Rosary Church on 7800 Vineland Boulevard, we're going to have, the National Bone Marrow Donor Program is going to have a blood drive, a bone marrow drive, as far as registry, that's this Sunday, the 27th, from 7:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. At 7:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And with that, it's been on the Spanish news about one of the soldiers that came back from Iraq who was released or discharged because he has leukemia. And he is going to be sent home in the next few days because at this time, the only thing they have hope for is possibly finding a match. Other than that, there's nothing they can do for him. So this bone marrow drive is in his honor and the many people who have suffered from these diseases that require bone marrow transplants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Other announcements? Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two announcements. First of all, tomorrow, from 8:30 until 11:30 a.m., Councilman Zine and myself will be sponsoring a consumer identity theft forum in Chatsworth, and we're bringing in specialists in the field of identity theft, which is the fastest-growing crime in America. There'll be specialists there from the credit card industry and consumer industry as well as LAPD. It'll be at the Elks Lodge at 20925 Osborne Street in Chatsworth, again from 8:30 to 11:30. Secondly, tomorrow, the Granada Hills North Neighborhood Council will be hosting the North Valley Emergency Repairness and Safety Fair at Kennedy High School in Granada Hills from 10 to 3 with a lot of lifesaving tips, a lot of displays on how to protect yourself, and also a lot of private industry demonstrations as well.
Thank you. Mr. Verigosa, do you have an announcement?
Yes, I do have an announcement, members. You heard a gentleman during public comment today talk about a tragedy in the city of Los Angeles. It happened to have occurred in the 14th Councilman Act District in Bull Heights, but it actually could have occurred anywhere. A young man, 35 years old, Miguel Gomez, who had rough times in his life, had been imprisoned, but was seeking redemption, trying to turn his life around, had gone to Father Boyle, a man, almost a saint, who we've honored here many times, who took him in as he takes in people like this young man all the time. He recounted how, when he came to him, he broke down and cried and said, "You know, I don't want to go back. I want to change my life. I want to give back. I want a job. I want to, I want to be productive for my family and for myself." And a few weeks later, as he's struggling to redeem himself and become a productive member of society and his community, to become a father that his children could look up to, he's shot dead in cold blood on a street, could have been any street, taking off graffiti for the city of Los Angeles with Homeboy's Industries. Looking at him as he lay there on the ground, I couldn't help but feel a rage and an anger and a sense of frustration at the wanton gang violence and gun violence that we experience here in the city of Los Angeles, especially frankly, in some communities of the city of Los Angeles. This wanton act of brutality had no motivation except to shoot someone who was cleaning up his community, who was engaging in the giving back. And I know that from time to time, we've all stood up and talked about the senseless violence in our community. This one really hit home. There was, I think, a feeling among all the young men, who by the way, are all out at 5:00 this morning, all out, cleaning up the streets and the neighborhoods of the 14th Councilman Act District. We let them go for the day yesterday because we felt like they needed to grieve and not be there and emotions were high, but they were determined to come back. And to me, that was a great example and the best thing that they could do in honor of this young man who gave his life for his community, a man trying to seek redemption. And you know, from time to time, when we demonize, and I say "we" collectively, not speaking to any of you, obviously, but when society demonizes these young people, we forget that they're somebody's father, son, daughter, sister, brother. We forget that they're human beings struggling with their demons, but many times struggling also to overcome. And for me, those other boys, those other young men who are working as we speak despite this obvious pall that is over them, is a great example of why Father Boyle's right. We have to continue to work with these young people. We have to reclaim our neighborhoods. We can't give them up. We have to say as a community that we will not demonize you. We see your humanity. We're going to work with you and we're going to help you overcome. And for me, that is a small lesson of yesterday's tragedy, that there really are still so many young men and women trying to turn their lives around. There's a great community in Bull Heights who is horrified, but also galvanized about bringing back a renaissance in their community. And so I wanted to say that and also adjourn in Mr. Miguel Gomez's memory as well.
Thank you, Mr. Verigosa. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair and colleagues. I think it's very appropriate for us to adjourn all members, as Mr. Verigosa has requested. And I wanted to also speak on this issue because as Mr. Verigosa said, it does hit home. It hit home, it hits home for me for a couple of reasons. If you recall, it was just a couple of weeks ago, maybe 10 days ago, that we were recognizing in the Public Works Commission, here in council chambers, a graffiti busters group from my district for the good work that they do. And within their troops are neighbors and extended family and friends, because the Northeast Valley is a relatively tight-knit community. And what happened in the 14th Council District the other day could easily happen in any one of our council districts. And we might not have personally known the young man, but it could easily have been somebody that we do know, or it could have been easily a family member of ours. And so I do believe that this incident hits home for a lot of people. It hits home for me also because I tell the story when I visit schools and other youth groups, that that's how I got my start in political affairs. It was through community service and ultimately realizing that community involvement is being involved in politics. But when I was elementary school age, junior high age, and was being volunteered in the community by my mother, a lot of times it was to go paint out graffiti. And so you do these things to try to make your community a better place, sometimes not recognizing, but sometimes recognizing and going forward anyway with some activities that could rarely, but could obviously lead to some violent activity. But more than anything else, colleagues, as the community and the city grieves this very unfortunate incident, as our chief of police has reminded us all, we have to make sure that the community feels it as well. It's not enough to, you know, be upset and disappointed at reading another incident or another statistic and then just move on with our lives. Where is the rage? Where is the lack of accepting violent activity in our community by not just the elected officials and not just the community organizations, but the community as a whole? And when there is that energy, when there is that concern and frustration and rage, then the challenge for community leaders is how do we channel that into ongoing involvement, into neighbors knowing each other, into the business community and nonprofits and other service providers in the community, finally meeting around a table to address issues comprehensively? For me, colleagues, that is the call to action that I feel from having heard what happened the other day in Mr. Verigosa's district. And I, for the first time here, and I haven't had a chance to have a private conversation with Mr. Verigosa, but let me say in public, if you want to get out there one day, I'll get out there with you to continue to paint over that graffiti at 5:00 in the morning. You let me know when, I'll be there.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. As my colleagues are speaking, what comes to mind is, last night at a community meeting in Highland Park, I was facing an angry group of citizens that were saying, "Why isn't the graffiti being painted out? Why aren't we picking up the trash?" And Officer Cooper, who's been senior lead officer for that area for 16 years, came to the microphone and said, "You know, folks, fear does many things, but if anything, do not let fear stop you from trying to make a difference. You need to call in when you see someone tagging the walls, the trees, the hydrants, the curbs, our awnings. You need to call it in. And when you find out who it is, you're going to find out it's your neighbor. You're going to find out it's the individual living down the street who's dumping the trash, people who are living next to you who are tagging your neighborhood, and no one calls it in." So the community themselves, ourselves, can make that difference. But the point he was making is we can't let fear keep us from defending our communities. And these kinds of incidences really makes people think twice about getting involved. But you can call it in. You can call it in anonymously. It allows for us, who represent our respective districts, to coordinate with our officers. Because we know for every 12 gang members, we have one officer, and they cannot do it alone. So let's call it in. Let's not allow fear to keep us from speaking out. And let's not make this an example of why we don't participate and enhance that apathy that has been like a blanket that silences everyone. We need to be more outraged. I want to thank Councilman Padilla and Councilman Verigosa for their words, because we can't let it quiet down our communities. We need to speak up and follow the advice of our officers who are trying to help us.
Ms. Grill.
Ms. Akasky, I happened to, last night, to be speaking to the Community Tagger Task Force in the San Fernando Valley that was established by Chief Bergman. And many of the people in the room were leaders of the nonprofits that you talk about and our representatives from Public Works and our police officers and sheriffs. And they all committed as well to say, "This only makes us stronger and more interested in painting out that graffiti." And we had business owners there who said, "If I paint it out right away," you know, and they try every day, "I keep painting it out and painting it out," they're not going to come back again. And it is about a community, a right of working together and taking responsibility and being part of how we respond to those concerns and complaints they have to tell us. I always tell, in many of my public meetings, I say, "You know, if you drive by and you don't call, you're part of the problem and you have to be part of the solution." And I think that Mr. Verigosa's words were wonderful as well and in a too, we all thought of Father Greg and the other young men and women who are out there every day painting graffiti. And we are saying today, and I think will every day, that we support them, we're there for them. And I'd be more than happy to join Mr. Padilla and I know probably other members would be able to join and participate in painting out graffiti in your neighborhood to say, "We'll stand with you and we'll stand with these young people and let them know they have a city and a city family that supports them."
Mr. Lovell.
Thank you, Madam President. I too appreciate your comments, Councilmember. And I, Jan Perry and I had had a conversation not too long ago where she was remembering, where we had actually met back when I was with the L.A. Conservation Corps in boots and a hard hat, working with a lot of those young guys. And the Corps is still there, housed in Jan's district. And one of the things that I don't think is recognized enough is that most of those crews that go out, and Alex referenced it, most of those crews that go out are absolutely keenly aware of the danger they're up against. And Ed touched on something, but it is sometimes a way that we define heroism in our city and heroism in our country. And when you think about some of these young guys being raised in a neighborhood where, and we talked about Trayvon Taylor, who we just lost from my Little League, for them to break away from a gang in their own neighborhood, become to break away from a gang in their own neighborhood, become part of a city project, then start taking down tags on a wall in their neighborhood, and come back and sleep at night in that same neighborhood, let me tell you, that's heroism. And they recognize that it is dangerous. And I distinctly remember questions Delphia Jones raised years ago about how we could help these guys. And I just, my heart goes out to everyone in your district, and I would just say to the young guys and young women who are on these cleanup crews, the whole Zero Tolerance Program that Reardon had ushered in, that we really applaud you. And so much so that we may even want to think about identifying a day in L.A. that is a No Graffiti Day, and maybe we make it Miguel Rafael Gomez Anti-Graffiti Day or something, where we all get out there on one day. We have Earth Day, we have different, we have National Night Out. Maybe there's a way that we can make sure that this young man's life was not lost in vain. At a minimum, I include my name on the list that would be more than happy to come out with you, should that happen. But I also stand in salute, and ask us all to stand in salute, of the hundreds of young, at-risk youth that are going out every day knowingly risking their lives to make this a cleaner, safer city. And sometimes we forget that they're aware of that, and they're still doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Very well said, Mr. Ludo, Mr. Padilla, Ms. Grule, Mr. Reyes, and particularly so, Mr. Villarreal. I will certainly join all of you in whatever Mr. Villarreal thinks would be the most appropriate way to show solidarity with those folks who are still out there every single day cleaning up the community. I know that in a few weeks, Mr. Villarreal, we're all going to be meeting, I believe we're going to be meeting off-site in your district. And I would really love to have the opportunity, when we're there, to hear firsthand, again, from Father Boyle, from the folks who he has working with him, and maybe that'd be a good time to follow up on the suggestions that were made here. Maybe there is something when we all, because we go on these road shows every once in a while, and by the end of the meeting, they peter out, and we haven't accomplished something. Maybe this really ought to unite all of us in recognizing that when we go to CD14, we ought to be delivering something.
Mr. Garcia.
Thank you. Colleagues, something pretty extraordinary happened here right now. It happens every so often in council when somebody drops a little bit of some issue or human face on something, and I think immediately you hear that it's just being discussed in Highland Park, and it was just being discussed in San Fernando Valley, and the experiences a couple of months ago in mid-city and south part of the city. I think I shared with you all last week, we brought together about 70 people for the first launching of Untag, this initiative uniting neighborhoods to abolish graffiti in the 13th District. And Chief Bratton gave us the harrowing statistic that six people under his watch have died because they were tagging or because they were trying to stop a tagger. And when we look at that human face, we have to step up and do more than just give our crews our backing, which we are going to do, and which we are going to go back in the 14th District and every district. And together, I think it'll be an amazing thing to see. We've got to work with our city attorney to make sure that prosecutions are out there. Anybody who thinks that graffiti is just a kid's prank, this is a very harrowing and sorrowing awakening to that. It's much, much more. That same day that I went out on Saturday to have that summit, two blocks from my own neighborhood, I was sharing with a couple colleagues before, there was pop, 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 screeching of a car, and pop, pop, pop. Luckily, nobody died, but two blocks from my own house, two people were shooting at each other because one was crossing out one person's tag and trying to put their own down. This simply requires, and sometimes it's a declaration and a realization when all of our hearts and minds come together, that this is not just a crisis, that doesn't begin to capture it. This is something that's ripping our city apart, and I look forward to the next couple of weeks to doing a lot about this, not just in Miguel's memory, but in a lot of people's memory in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Are there other tributes, other resolutions? Mr. Ludo? Adjourn any more?
Yes. Colleagues asked that we adjourn in memory of Ms. Hoon Rae Park, faithful wife of Mr. Simon Park and a wonderful mother to her children. Dr. Peter Park, medical director, and Ms. Lily Park, an artist. She ended her seven-month ordeal with lung cancer to be with God. Mrs. Hoon Rae Park graduated from EWA Women's University in Seoul, Korea, whereupon she married Mr. Simon Park, a diplomat. Mrs. Park took care of the family during their tour of duty in Pakistan and in Taiwan. After returning to South Korea, she and her husband made an important decision to immigrate to the United States. In order to provide the best possible education for their children, they gave up a very comfortable life as part of the South Korean diplomatic corps. Mrs. Park and her husband operated a small business in the New Jersey area for almost two decades. Mrs. Park and her husband's sacrifice can be seen through their children's success. Their son, Dr. Peter Park, went on to become a successful doctor in Florida. Mrs. Lily Park, a trained artist, now lives in Los Angeles and plans to open up a studio in the near future. Mrs. Park is survived by her husband, Mr. Simon Park, her son, Dr. Peter Park, her daughter, Lily Park, and her grandchildren, Kevin Park, Hoon Justin Suk, Dong Hoon Martin Suk, and Myung Su Suk, her son-in-law, and a member of my staff in my district office, as well as Dr. Christina Park, daughter-in-law.
Thank you. Other members? Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I want to adjourn in memory of Dolores Pitts Durr. She began her civil service with the City of Los Angeles on January 14, 1975, as a clerk typist assigned to the Personnel Department. She excelled in her career in the clerical field and was promoted to Principal Clerk in 1983. She entered the professional field with the city in 1987, and in 1999, she advanced to Management Analyst II with the Community Development Department. She devoted 29 years to the city of Los Angeles, with the last 17 dedicated years to the Community Development Department assisting various city departments and nonprofit agencies in improving the quality of life for the residents of Los Angeles, until her sudden illness on December 1, 2003. She is survived by her husband, Ephraim Durr, her daughter, Loretta D. Durr Hatfield or Hartfield, and twins, Laurent and Laura Lee, Durr brothers, Andre and Robert Pitts, and sisters, Marguerite Pitts Phillips, Alice Pitts, Teresa Peters, and Antoinette Pitts.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two adjourned motions. The first one is in the honor of Joe Macias. Joe Macias died of cancer on Saturday, June 19. He was 75 years old and a retired county employee from Descanso Gardens. He worked at Manassero Senior Center as a Recreation Assistant II for the last five years. He is survived by his wife, Mary Macias, and his two daughters. If I may, councilmembers, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Sheldon Robb. He passed away earlier this month from a stroke. He was on vacation in Laughlin, Nevada at the time. He was 65. He is a stepfather of Maury Goldman. Many of you do know Maury. He's been working in City Hall for many years, since the early '90s, and has been one of those silent heroes in the background, working on many projects and programs for the city. He is a resident of the 12th District, so Councilmember Greg Smith would like to join me on this adjourned motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Other tributes? Mr. Parks?
I have an announcement.
All right.
With the tributes. Okay. I have two announcements. One, the Minority AIDS Project under the direction of Carolyn Martin is holding a free testing at two locations for tomorrow. This is in honor of the 10th Annual National HIV Testing Day. The Minority AIDS Project Prevention Network, along with the Magic Johnson Healthcare Centers and the Charles Drew University Mobile Testing Project, will be at two locations, the City of Los Angeles, from 11:00 to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday to 26th at Savon Drug Store at La Brea and Rodeo Road, 5101 Rodeo Road. Also, a second location from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the L.A. Sheriff's Twin Towers on 450 Beauregard Street. This is a significant issue, because as many of us thought that AIDS had been pretty well resolved, what we are finding is an escalating disease within particularly the black community. In fact, one of the statistics they give is AIDS is the leading cause of death amongst African-American women aged 25 to 34, and it kills more African-American men aged 25 to 44 than any other disease. And so we'd encourage the public, go out there, have confidential and both the oral test and the rapid test that's given at those two locations. The second notification for the public is this 8th District, along with Cultural Affairs, will be holding its second annual Jazz and Blues Festival Sunday, July 4th, 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 at the Vision Theater Backlot in Le Mertre Park.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Council is adjourned.[1763.01][1763.01][music]